Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the August 24 special meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. I'd like to just add a comment that it's nice to be back in person. We're running our meeting tonight in hybrid mode. We have some of the board members and cabinet members here at the high school in the Wagner Room in our old meeting area, and then we have some of our board members and cabinet members joining us remotely, so taste of what things are going to look like ahead. So we'll kick off the meeting with the approval of our minutes from our last meeting on August 10th. Do I have a motion? Julie, second. Brendan, all in favor? Okay. Full support. Next is to review our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion? Penny, second. Sheri, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. So as with our prior meetings, we would ask you that if you'd like to address the board, to raise your hand using the raise hand feature, and Dr. Lutzey will move you over into the room to speak.
And as Ms. Parkhill shared, we are running this meeting hybrid. So if there were, I saw somebody mention that the sound wasn't very clear, so we've turned up the microphone here to make it a little more clear for everybody. Hopefully that works. Okay. Our first will be Jill Honey.
Hello.
And you should be on, yes.
Good evening. So, over the past three months, members of the NCPS community, including current students, parents, alumni, and community members additionally, have come together to advocate and bring to light the need for concentrated effort around diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school systems. And we've made our points clear over time, and we have appreciated your willingness to follow through these efforts. And after hundreds attended an event, a chance to unpack and an open forum follow-up, it's become imperative to ensure that diversity, equity, and inclusion is at the forefront of our conversations and that proper resources are put behind it. In the previous board meeting, it was clear that the mental health, well-being of NCPS students is a high priority for the board, and yet, I've spoken personally to many BIPOC members of this community who do not feel supported. What this historical moment in our nation's racial reckoning and the efforts of allied supporters have done is create an opening where our own local BIPOC students finally feel comfortable, feel more than comfortable, making their experiences known and feeling that perhaps for the first time, you know, that they will be listened to and understood. And I would like to take a moment to thank them all for their courage in speaking up and hope that you, as our school board, will show them that you are ready to respond to that. The curtain has been pulled back, and I think it's time to get to work. And waiting for the quote "right time" risks further damage to the situation. We need to let our students of color know that we are here for them, and we hear them, and we support them, and I believe in this board's ability to do so. And so I am thanking you all in advance for the efforts that you will make to erect the situation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lauren. Okay, Lauren?
Hi. Hello, my name is Lauren Nussbaum. My husband Matt and I have three girls in the NCPS schools. As a scholarship student at a Boston prep school, I went to school each day with my family's mantra in my head: "To whom much is given, much is expected." So I am here, the recipient of so much, with a great responsibility to stand up and speak for every family in New Canaan who knows that together, we can be more excellent. NCPS's goal is to graduate students with the knowledge and skills to succeed in a dynamic and complex global society. To do this, students must be educated in a space that makes diversity, equity, and inclusion an absolute priority. This cannot be an afterthought, an extracurricular, or an optional exercise. We must make this intrinsic to every part and every level of the NCPS curriculum and culture. Here is how we start to achieve this. I respectfully ask you to hire a person of color to be the full-time director of diversity, equity, and inclusion. NCPS would not hire a course director who hasn't sung a note, an AP Bio teacher without a degree in biology, or any instructor who lacks a deep understanding and experience in their field of study. So that is why we need our director of DEI to be a person of color. A white person cannot be an expert on the BIPOC history, experience, or teaching of it. It is simply not possible. This hire would relieve the great pressure on our current teachers to examine and enhance their curriculum. This director would oversee, implement, and assist, and be a beacon for BIPOC students and for all of us. There is a great urgency in this request. We must start now. The work is waiting, and we are late to it. My deep thanks to Dr. Lutzey, NCPS, and the entire BOE for showing up every day throughout this COVID crisis. You have gone above and beyond. Now, let us show up for our BIPOC parents and students. Let them know through action that they matter, that they are an enormous part of what makes us excellent. Let's educate our white families, mine included, so that we can do better to create schools where everyone feels included and celebrated. To me, that is excellence. Let us be excellent together. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Michael.
My name is Michael Charzak, and I'm a graduate of New Canaan High School, class of 2010. My career focus has been on educational equity, including my undergraduate work, a master's in education, social change from the University of Miami. I spent two years working for Teach for America in Miami before leaving to Al Progreso in Honduras, where I worked at a bilingual school, the goal of breaking the cycle of poverty for a low-income community. Afterwards, I moved to Houston, Texas, and continued to work as a public high school math teacher for a newcomer and refugee population. I've since begun working in data analysis for my district, consulting district leadership, campus leadership, and teachers. I had a best-serve student space upon student achievement, growth, and college readiness stat. Upon reviewing the proposed district goals for this year, I'm thankful that we are moving to adopt a goal specific to issues of diversity and inclusion. Based upon EdSite, which is Connecticut's accountability website, I've done an analysis on NCPS staffing data for the past five years. I asked that an objective H be added to goal four, objective two stating: Establish a district goal to match or exceed the state average of 9.6% minority-certified staff by school year 2024-2025. I additionally asked that the board include staff demographic breakdowns on the staff utilization report that is administered in October. I'm extremely grateful for the educational opportunities that have been afforded to me due to the education that I received in the New Canaan public school system. I hope that the measures offered tonight and the adoption of a goal regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion would provide an improved experience for all New Canaan public school students, so that they too can live fondly on their educational experience in NCPS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Vijay. Okay.
Hi. My name is Vijay Iyer. I've been a New Canaan resident for over five years. I'm the general counsel of Kayak, the travel company based in Stanford, and I just wanted to add on to some great points made by Lauren and Michael just now, coming from private sector background a little bit, focusing a bit on the pipeline of our staffing administration and our teachers, and thinking about how that angle can be addressed through, address some of the DNI things that we're talking about today. If we look around, there's a lot of companies that have taken action in response to recent events, such as Google, Nike, and Adidas, among others, with a commitment publicly to be more transparent about their hiring and demographic, demographics of the company makeup, including executives down to all employees, and setting goals such as having 30% of the workforce reflect BIPOC and diverse candidates and makeup. What I would like to ask the board to consider today is adopting a similar rule, either something along the lines of a goal of having 30% representation, or along the lines of what the NFL has done, which is the Rooney Rule, which we've also adopted at my company, which is for every open position, consider at least two BIPOC candidates, and track and measure and be transparent about the process of the positions that have been open, whether candidates of color BIPOC were considered for those positions, and how are we doing in terms of fulfilling our goals of increasing representation of BIPOC candidates? So I would respectfully submit that. Thank you for your time, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
And next is Brian.
Hi, this is Kate Ryan and Emma Duran. We have been living in New Canaan for three years now. We moved here from New York City. We have one daughter in South School right now. And when we moved here and we toured the town, we already knew moving to New Canaan was going to be a challenge with diversity, but we decided, you know, it's close to New York City, there might be something different about this school, about this place, and we may not, it may not be as challenging. Well, it has been, and it's really hard not being asked questions about, why are you here? Why is your hair like that? It's very clear that white children are not being exposed to the world that they're going to meet when they leave New Canaan. And it's our responsibility as parents, teachers, to prepare them for the global world that they're about to meet. And as a mother of brown children, a brown person myself, it's deeply dissatisfying and hurtful to know that we have to constantly explain our existence in these spaces, and it never feels safe. And I think the best way for these kinds of things to change is for our children to be exposed to people of different backgrounds. We have a society right now that's canceling people for everything, and a lot of people are being canceled out because they just don't know. And if we are sending children out there unprepared, they're going to say the wrong things, they're going to do the wrong things, they're going to get fired. It's just, it's the culture that we're in right now. So it's best that we prepare them. If I have to prepare my brown children for the white, the white world that they're going to walk into that has all this power, then it's only right that you guys know how it is on the other end, so that the leverage, we can finally get to a place where these kinds of conversations are coming to an end, because it's, it's a lot. I can't walk somewhere without somebody following me. I can't walk somewhere in town without, you know, somebody saying some snide remark. We've had to call the police. We, it's gotten to the point where it's unacceptable. So I really do believe that this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of this moment and learn, relearn, and really be present, because our children know, they know something is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Oh, I see a couple more hands up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Fatu?
Hello. Hi, it's Ethan, Ethan Yang.
Yes.
Hi. So I just graduated from the class of 2020, and I just wanted to offer a statement about our history curriculum. I feel that at Saks and New Canaan High School, our Black History lessons have always included slavery, the antebellum South, and a brief overview of Jim Crow, and then Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King. And while these are obviously very important parts of American history, they don't tell the full story. We often stop there, as if racism was finally conquered once and for all by the Civil Rights Act, and that was the end of it. But racism is still around, and if you don't teach students why and how it manifests, you will create biases. If you never tell people why something is happening, they'll come to their own conclusions. They'll decide whether consciously or unconsciously that a majority of Black and other minority people are in a lower economic bracket by their own doing, that they're not as smart, that they can't get ahead because they didn't try enough, when in reality, there is a large and complex system of policies, laws, and loopholes, purpose-built to put them there and to keep them there. And we were never taught about quiet, underhanded forms of racism. We never learned about redlining, the war on drugs, mass incarceration, the prison reentry system, the jury system, prosecutors, or police bias. So many things happened as a part of history that have direct effects that can be seen today, and if New Canaan students could just know about these things, it would help combat the prejudices that people carry, whether they realize it or not. It would help these students understand why New Canaan has a low percentage of minorities, why minorities make less on average than white people, why nicer schools are often less diverse. From that point, it would be up to them what they want to do about it, if they want to do something about it, but it is the school's job to leave the kids educated, not only about the past, but about the world that's around them right now. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if Brian Duran was going to speak. So let me just check.
I'm here. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to add to what my wife said and what a lot of other people have said. I think some great steps for concrete action in this area have been listed tonight, including the hiring of a full-time director to oversee these efforts. Just one, one comment I'd like to make, having been, being a white man who's navigated this situation as well in my own family, in my own kind of circles, is that a lot of times, you know, with, when this moment passes, when this moment that we're in as a country, as a nation, when it all cools down, you know, we'll be left with something. We'll be left with, with the action of what we did or didn't do, right? And if we set, we set a concrete goal such as 25% people of color being hired or interviewed for certain roles, a lot of times, we'll get people in those roles and we'll think we accomplished a mission, whereas those people will also continue to bear the burden of a culture that still goes unaddressed. So oftentimes, 25 people might be, 25% of people, let's say they get the job, let's say they get the role, they're still going to be navigating a culture in which, in which whiteness is really dominating the culture, white norms are dominating the culture, and it's really going to take a long-term effort among the people who hold the privilege to really examine what that is and how it's impacting that, those people in that seat. So from my perspective, it's not just about getting people in the seats or adding this to the curriculum or getting this person hired, it's more about examining also the culture in which we swim, the norms in which we, which, in which we navigate each day, and looking at ourselves internally to say, how can I, you know, prevent this, or how can I improve, you know, the tomorrow that we're leaving, so this reckoning, this national moment of reckoning will, you know, will not continue to happen. Thank you for all the work that's been done in this area, and I appreciate your, your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
Hey, this is Brian Zhu. I was class 2011. I just want to say, I really do owe some, a lot of the success and fulfillment I find in my career to, to the education I received at NCPS. But I do also want to say that as an Asian-American, there's a lot that happened that I really don't look back on with fondness. I just remember a lot of months of feeling isolation, in a sense that I, I didn't really belong, and being spoken of not be for who I was or my accomplishments, but as though my Chinese background was really the only thing unique and special about me. And I've always been proud to be Chinese-American, but it was challenging while I was going to New Canaan High School to feel that way. It wasn't until I graduated and went to university that other students started, you know, calling me by my first name rather than my last name, or some amalgamation of my last name that, that was amusing or funny, and saw my background more as a part of me rather than the main thing that, that I was. So I, you know, I appreciate all the work that the board's put in regarding DEI and otherwise, because it has given me an enormous kickstart that helped me in my life. But I do feel that there are, you know, huge issues that, and people suffering, students suffering, that is, that has been unaddressed and really needs attention. But thank you, thank you for your time, and again, appreciate everything, all the work you've put in, because I know it's an enormous amount of work, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to our limit on that topic. If there's anyone else wishing to address the board on a separate topic, please raise your hand. Okay. Same then, we'll move on. Thank you all. Reports and recognition, so tonight, we will spend a good amount of time of our meeting discussing our school reopening, our school opening update with Dr. Lutzey and the cabinet.
Yes, thank you. And again, thank you to everyone who came out to our meeting tonight. It's one of the great virtues of a virtual meeting, that people can attend remotely, and I don't think we would typically have close to 70 people in the Wagner Room for a meeting, so that's, it's good news. So today, I am very proud and happy to report that we, our teachers, faculty returned to the district for the very first day of professional learning as we prepared for the start of the 2020-2021 school year. We began the morning, as we have traditionally, with convocation, but given the, the reality of where we are, it was a virtual convocation, but it went very, very well. Little technology glitch here and there that I, I worked through myself, but it was very successful, and we feel very good about it. We're off to a very good start. And I know, I'm talking to the principals just this afternoon, to have people back in the buildings, moving around, meeting, doing their work, always implementing the mitigation strategies, and I do want to make the point that as we sit here in the Wagner Room, we're all eight feet or more apart in order to have our meeting and do what we're doing, which is, is working out quite well. But our teachers were back in the building, we started our school year, and we're off to a very good start. So tomorrow, we come back and we really take a deep dive into some of the technology, and I'll have Dr. Karanti in a little while go into more detail around our professional learning plan. What I wanted to share with you is the, some of the things happening, some of the results of the survey, the COVID testing results that we've just had reported back in, thanks to our spectacular Health Department, and then sort of handoff to Jill to take it from there. So, quick updates on a couple of things of importance. At 4 o'clock today, we had a superintendent meeting with Glenn Longriley, the executive director of the C I A C. He gave us an update on where they are in their conversations with the Department of Public Health about fall sports. Today, they, they announced, I think it was today, it had been last night, anyway, they announced that they're going to resume conditioning for the fall sports in, similar to the ways that it had been running in July and August. They are getting that started and continuing their conversations with the Department of Public Health in the hope that they'll reach an agreement together in the plans for the, for the fall. They recognize that it's playing, playing sports isn't like flipping a switch. You can't just be on the sidelines for months and then just jump into the game. So the conditioning is meant to help to, you know, re-acclimate folks to the sport and get our kids back in shape, in the hope that they'll be able to play. In his conversation, Glenn shared with us that they're also looking at the community spread metrics, they're looking at the data that's available, and again, speaking with the, the Health Department to try to make the best decision, guided by health and safety, by recognizing that, you know, athletics is an important part of our kids' lives, and they're, they're working to honor that, too. There's some difference in, in the athletics and the sports, of course. They look at a high-risk sport, they consider football to be high-risk, they're considering volleyball to be moderate risk, because it's indoors in a gym, and the others, they're putting somewhere, you know, low to moderate, being that they're outdoors and the, the duration of, of contact in the sport, in soccer, in field hockey, or whatever, it's a short duration, any kind of contact you may have, which is different than football or again volleyball indoors. So they're looking at each sport individually and hoping that by the end of the week, they've come to, come to an agreement with the Department of Public Health, and they're able to communicate that. So it's a stay tuned update, but at least that conditioning and being able to get back together doing that, following those same guidelines that we have been following, which is about number of kids that are involved and, you know, how to organize it and manage it. It's not a whole team all at once, it's smaller groups of, of student athletes, but at least it gets them moving and gets them on the field. So that's a good update, I thought.
Conditioning is not practice for football?
It's not practice, no. It's not skill, it's strictly conditioning. The, and that's an important distinction, and that's what they're working to try to get some feedback from the DPH before they make a decision about actual skill work.
Is there like a go and a no date?
He's helping by the end of the week, but we don't know. Yep.
Is the conditioning non-contact?
Yes.
And are, is the group also looking at sort of unconventional solutions? I mean, things like, you know, maybe you can't do volleyball inside, but maybe you could set up courts outside and do it, things like that?
So I raised that question today, that exact question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, about volleyball, as I have some experience with volleyball.
Speech volleyball?
That's right, and I asked that. So the committees for each sport are the ones who are sort of making through, working through these recommendations. The volleyball one specifically, for instance, was that they were not going to recommend outdoor play, but they were looking at possibly wearing a mask while playing, with an understanding that it's not really an aerobic activity. It's, putting my feedback around that aside, they, what the committee had discussed, I guess, was about a concern about losing kids. If they go outside to play, they may lose them to club. And that's one of the challenges that the C I A C is working through, like understanding that if high school sports don't happen, then are club sports going to happen? In which case, does it make it an even less safe environment for everybody, giving that clubs draw from multiple communities and pull kids in? So they're trying to weigh all of the possible outcomes. I suggested volleyball outdoors. I think that that's a reasonable solution. I think there are other reasonable solutions, hopefully, that they're going to take in, under consideration, and we'll just keep, keep sharing our, our feedback with them.
Great.
Yeah. After that meeting, I attended a meeting with the Department of Public Health. This is part of that committee that I've mentioned before, that we meet at least once a week, sometimes a couple of times a week. On Friday, I met with a subcommittee of that group to work on communication on a statewide level, because as you look around the state, you know, we're having similar experiences, but we're all spending all the time creating the, all the communications. And so what we're going to look to do is create some templates for boards of ed to use to help streamline that communication. Of course, we would take the template and sort of customize it and make it our own, but it should help with communications. As you know, there's an enormous appetite for information out there, so we want to make sure that we do whatever we can to facilitate that. We also talked about the mask guidance that we anticipate getting very soon from the CDC. You know, there's a variety of different masks, everything from the gaiters to masks that have ventilation holes, to, you know, the cloth masks, to KN95s, N95s, there's a lot of, there are many options, and there's, there are many questions. So the DPH and this committee's been putting together guidance about that, and that'll come out soon. And the, they're up to addendum eight now in the state plan. So again, the DPH continues to put out addendums, which are really guidance about specific dimensions of our work. The most recent one, which is eight, is about safety protocols, so fire drills and lockdown drills and those kinds of things. So we'll keep, we keep working through those as they, as they arrive, and making sure that we operationalize and use those to guide our decision-making. So there's everything from preschools in K-12 environments, to the health metrics, to the arts and music, to what to do if there's a positive case, all of those things are different addendums that come through. So we're continuing, the DPH creates the draft, brings it to this committee, we kind of workshop it, edit it, get it back, go back and forth, and on this committee are the local health directors and some pediatricians and epidemiologists and others, so it's continuing to churn out guidance that should hopefully be helpful.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the metrics, you mentioned the DPH was standardizing, so is it possible then to have like New Canaan, I mean, standardized metrics across each school community, so that we're able to receive and then post or communicate New Canaan-specific metrics? Is that the goal? Or is that- metrics? Is that the goal? Or is that beyond? I mean, I'm just wondering what's coming through the state versus our local Health Department and how that would be a funnel to the school community.
Sure. I'm not, could, just give me a thumbs up. Could you hear Katrina's question?
No, they can't hear me at all.
No, you really couldn't hear.
Brian, she's really, she's really muffled. I mean, it's very, she sounds like she's in, both she and Penny sound like they are very far away.
Gotcha. So.
Yeah, Brian, we can hear you, but all the other people in the room sound like they're far away from your, uh, microphone.
Gotcha. Okay. So Tony's going to turn up those mics and, okay, give that.
Okay. Better? Thumbs up? Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, so I I'll rephrase the question and the answer.
Thank you.
Okay. The question really was about our reporting of our local metrics. Is the state and the D P H going to be, um, reporting the metrics on a local basis? And do they match up with our local Health Department as far as what Jen has and and our own testing and things that we do? So a couple of things about that. The the state is really strongly urging school districts and towns to look on a county level, not really to to use the metrics that they've developed on a town-by-town level, primarily because the leading indicator that they've identified is the number of positive cases per 100,000 people on a on a seven-day moving average, right? So over the course of seven days, number of confirmed positive cases per 100,000 people. The challenge with that, of course, is in a town like New Canaan with 20,000 people, a couple of positives could could skew the numbers as far as community spread goes. So they're reporting that out at a county level first. So Fairfield County, which has a little under a million people, um, they use that pool to make the determination around what's the level of community spread with, under the assumption that people are moving up and up and down around the county too. You know, we don't just stay in our towns. We're moving around, you know, certainly in and out of the surrounding towns, uh, depending on the day. So that's the first metric. The next, then you can drill down into that and you can get to your towns' metrics, which we've done. Uh, and here in New Canaan, our town metric about mirrors what the Fairfield County metric is right now. The, um, so we can always do that and we can look at that and use that to sort of further refine our discussions and considerations, but it's really not the best measure of the level of community spread. Uh, they really feel that the better measure is to look on a county level. Reason why it might be different than what our local Health Director reports is that the state data controls for, um, nursing homes, residential facilities and prisons. So those numbers are removed from their reporting out, which also can account for the number being different than what you might find in the New York Times or what you might find in, online at the Harvard Global Health Project, which is where the indicators came from. So the state, uh, controls those numbers out to really try to get to what they consider a true number for the the community spread. And again, this is a leading indicator because the, it the positive cases versus hospital admissions or, you know, um, uh, COVID deaths and things like that, those, of course, are lagging indicators. So they try to use a leading indicator to be one that gives you that, um, early warning around levels of community spread. Um, we will link to the state's, um, database. It's it's open. Anyone can go and see it. It's right there. It's very, very well put together. Um, they've got data that goes back to March to show trends and other things as well. Um, but I I would hesitate reposting the information on our site because it changes. You know, every week on Thursday, they're going to publish. So I'd I'd like to link to the original source to make sure we're always providing people the most updated information.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think it's important just to have a consistent source that everyone's using to inform. Yeah.
Right. And again, it's important. That's not, um, the only factor in the decision-making, right? That's a one dimension and it's something, it's a leading indicator. It helps us to see and it helps us to plan. It is something that we have to consider in making the decision. But then we would speak with the the board. We'd speak with our, uh, Health Director, with Jen. We'd speak with our District Doctor, Dr. Pierce, the Town Doctor, Dr. Reed, others, in order to sort of to make decisions around what are the best, um, what's the best place for us to be and what are the best things we, most important things we need to do. So it's one important dimension of that, but not the only thing.
Deanna has a question.
So Brian, I just, um, I I have a little bit of, um, concern about, uh, countywide look. Um, and maybe you can help me get more comfortable with that because, um, we have multiple urban settings in our county. Um, and from what I'm hearing, um, one of those one of those urban settings is starting to have, um, more of a spike and I would, and we're doing great here. And I wouldn't want our, uh, kids' educational, uh, you know, being open, uh, determined by one of the urban cities that, um, is having a problem right now. And so, um, and I don't know how much of the state is going to ask us to to act as a county or, I mean, you said that you'd look to us, so I get a little bit of comfort by that. But, um, so that's one question. And the other question is, um, I'm also a little concerned about the testing. Um, I've been hearing a couple of the out calls by the first selectmen and we get these positive results and then, you know, they get two negative tests. So they're, they're, the testing is not really accurate. Um, and so, you know, I would hate to be making decisions based on, you know, an, uh, a positive test by one child and and that cohort in school and then finding out, you know, that they tested negatively twice and, you know, we made a major decision based on that information. So I just wanted to understand how we're going to handle that.
Sure, sure. So to your first question, Deanna, the, um, the decision remains local, right? So the metrics may, will guide us to revisit maybe or to to consider other things if we start to see them trending in a negative way. Uh, but unless the governor shuts the, all the schools in the state down, as he did, um, you know, mid-March, March 15th, whenever that was, we had already been closed, as you know, on the 11th. Uh, but unless the governor feel, does see something going on and make that decision based on the feedback from his epidemiologist and others, uh, then the decision will remain local. Uh, these, the indicators in the system is set up to, um, guide us in our, in our thinking and decision-making, but it's not set up to be hard and fast rules in any way. So, and D P H feels very strongly about that. They recognize how every community is different, every situation is different. Um, they're really even, um, part of the conversation tonight was, you know, there there are calls for people to say, what do we do if there's a positive case? And the, in this world, the answer is, it depends. It depends upon all the contact tracing methodology, all the the mitigation strategies that are in place, the, there's so many factors. So it's not a black and white decision. And that's where the local decision-making is so key and the partnership with our local Health Department. You know, so Jen and I speak almost every day and, uh, you know, sort of being on the same page with each other helps us to be able to make those decisions, you know, when they come. But again, barring something that's a statewide crisis and issue that everything has to be closed, I don't, do not anticipate that the decision would be, uh, outside of the local. Okay.
And what's the trigger for the local, like, is there some number? Is there?
Sure. Yeah, there is. There, um, again, we can, I can show you if you'd like to see that data portal or I'll send you a link. It might be easier. Uh, but the the trigger, essentially, we're in low community spread if it is between zero and nine identified cases on a seven-day average.
For the count.
Per 100,000 people across the county. Right. So it's, again, it's a seven-day average. Um, if it's between 10 and 24, then you're considered in moderate community spread. 25 and above, you're in high community spread. And low is, um, you know, it's for, um, conditions are, appear good to bring students back. Moderate is to strengthen some mitigation strategies and do, and then high, of course, would be, uh, they recommend remote learning.
So if we hit one of these trigger points, then the whole county's essentially deciding what to do, each district?
District by district.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And we could say it's all isolated in one community.
Right.
In one town. And if that's the case, we make a one decision. If we know that it's spread out across the county, we might make a different decision. Right, right. And that's where you take it to re, to make sure, it sort of triggers you to look at everything and to make sure you're having those conversations, but it doesn't tell you what to do.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So Brian, can you answer the second part of that question about, you know, that we've had a lot of positive cases that turned out to be negative?
Yep.
And I I don't know how the testing works, how quickly they do the follow-on testing where they got the negative, the two negative results, but, um, I I can foresee a problem in our commu, in the schools with that kind of testing.
Yeah. So there are, there are several different tests, as I'm sure, you know, many of us know. Um, the testing that we've done from the start here in New Canaan and continue to do is the PCR testing, not the rapid testing. You know, when we set up a testing center, we're using the more accurate test in doing that. So I think that's one positive step. Um, another is, you know, if somebody is tested positive and those close contacts need to be quarantined, if that person then is cleared by the Health Department, so they do get retested twice and those are cleared, then, you know, we would look to move people back in right away. I think that this is where the fluidity of the system we're talking about is is so important, and it's going to be a challenge, undoubtedly. But the, um, the work we were just doing prior to this meeting was to put enough together into, um, and to be able to communicate that. So people recognize that a positive case does not mean we close a school. A positive case may not even mean that we put out a cohort. You know, everything depends on a se, a series of different, um, variables that we have to look at. And that's why contact tracing is is really complex and why people go through training on how to how to do contact tracing, because there are lots of questions that we need to ask and things we need to learn. So this, the, um, framework that was just put together, that's, uh, I'll be getting tonight as a draft and hopefully by the end of the week, if not sooner is out, speaks to, you know, what, what are some of the considerations when there's a positive case? Um, and what steps should be taken? And what if there are two positive cases? You know, what's some of the things you look at is can you cre, can you find a connection between two positive cases of a third positive case so you know where they got it or not? And if not, it's one, it may be one series of actions. If so, it may be a different. So it's very complex and there's no one answer, but the, where the work we're doing now is to really try to think through this different scenario so that we have a path to follow if and when a positive case is identified. Again, if we identify a positive case and we follow those steps and then a couple of days later find out that it was a false positive, that's wonderful news. We just bring everybody back, you know, immediately, as quickly as we can. Um, don't, can't speak to what's going to happen, which is why my advice continues to be, you know, we're going to be flexible, keep an open mind and react quickly and thoughtfully to things that come up. I think it's the best we can do right now. And you're, you're exactly right about, um, a town north of us. You know, there was, there are positive cases in Danbury. Um, they just, over the weekend, popped up. They were talking a little bit about this and think may, perhaps it could be a result in part of, um, the power outage, where power was out for, you know, a week for many people. And there were people getting together in places where there was power and, uh, and they think that may be a part of this as well. So if that's the case, you know, it's isolated there, you can identify sort of where it came from and then take steps to get it under control. But a perfect example for local decision-making, I believe that as a result, uh, Danbury's beginning in rem, in remote learning now. They weren't going to, but now as a result of this, they're going to start the school year in remote. So Danbury can do that. We're also in Fairfield County, but we're not changing our plans. So I think that's another, an example of where, you know, the local context matters. Okay. Sure.
So Brian, I just have two questions. One is if, can you just kind of talk about what we've learned at the college level as all the colleges have come back and as some universities, um, have had spikes and then had to go online versus others who have had better testing protocols and contact tracing have been able to keep steady? And then, so I think at the cows' level at least, what we've learned is that the testing capability is so critical. And I guess I'm just wondering, so in the case we have a positive case or two, how do we, you know, because we're not going to be like a college and be able to administer the testing to that cohort. So how do we approach that? What's the communication and, you know, the encouragement for, you know, the, you know, to follow the contact tracing and to get all those students around those positive cases tested at that point? So we understand the size of the issue? That's my first question. And then my second question is, in the worst-case scenario, if we get triggered to go remote, um, can you clarify if that would be synchronous or asynchronous learning?
Sure. So to your, to your first question, um, the, well, in a moment, I'll give, I'll share the results of the testing that we did do, which are very positive. And I think many of you may have heard them on the, on an out call tonight. Um, but what we've been doing, and we've had a great partner here locally with Stanford Hospital and certainly, you know, um, Harrison with Norwalk Hospital and others. Um, we are establishing a hotline for anyone who needs to be tested so they can make a call, go in right away, get tested and get those results within 24 to 48 hours. I think that that's an important step because we do believe that testing needs to be available for anybody who feels that they need it. Um, the, and, you know, to speak specifically to the colleges, as you know, um, there's so many and everyone has taken different, somewhat different approach, it seems, as they've tried to navigate this and figure it all out, um, some with some success, some not. Uh, the, and those that are still doing the testing, I know, are struggling a bit because the students are not necessarily following their orders around quarantining or the, you know, the directions around staying with the students in their cohort. So I do think it's going to be a challenge, um, you know, for students in the colleges, just like it's going to be, you know, for everybody. Um, the, we need to continue to educate our, our students, our families, our community around the importance of, um, maintaining these mitigation strategies. They work. I mean, we see, you can go into the data portal and you can see the sharp decline of known cases and you can track it almost right on to the date where we started implementing the mitigation strategies as a community and as a state. And you can see those things coming down. So we know that these things work. Um, but we also know that kids are, um, oft, sometimes going to make some decisions that are, um, seem great in the short term, regardless of possible long-term consequences. So we need to continue to educate them so they they make good decisions. The, you know, as far as the speed of the testing or testing cohorts and things, uh, we can't mandate testing prior to coming in like colleges can, right? They can require testing. You have to be clean. They can quarantine you when you, when people come in. But if we continue to help folks understand the importance of doing it, I think that's a, that's a one big step. I think another one, I'll move that away a little bit. Another is making those tests available and then again, remaining flexible. I mean, we have the, the flow chart for what steps should we take if there is a known positive in the, in the classroom? And it's not necessarily putting out an entire group of children. It's again, using the C D C guidelines, looking at known positives and, uh, going through, doing that contact tracing for each child. So I, you know, we have this, the plan to follow. It's, uh, we're going to implement it when the time comes and continue to learn as we do, you know, continue to get better at it as we do. But, you know, the, the colleges that are about to close and go all remote have had to do so because they saw an upward trend and saw that the challenges that they have in isolating and containing that trend. For us, locally, it's a little, it's a lot different, right? Even high school kids, we've got 4,200 kids across the district and that means, you know, families and parents and others that will work with us. So if there is, there are positive cases, we can isolate and contain quickly and that will enable us, we expect, to maintain our operations for the majority of our kids. So it's just, you know, it is different in that way. Um, they don't have, and colleges, as you know, thousands, if not tens of thousands of young adults who are off of college, um, and, you know, they may not be making the best decisions all the time, and more short-term decisions. As far as the, if we do have to go fully remote, we're calling it a blended experience for our students. There will be synchronous times, absolutely. You know, they are, you know, at the high school last year, we kept to a schedule. We did adjust that schedule a little bit, but we learned quite a bit last year in our, uh, remote learning. Sorry, Tony. We learned quite a bit in our remote learning experience last year that we're going to be applying across the board, K 12. So, um, Jill can get into some more specifics, certainly, but, uh, but it would be, it'd be blended with synchronous pieces where we would expect the building schedule to be followed, maybe adjusted, but to be followed. Students would be logging in at certain times. We'd be taking attendance with those students. And then they might have other work where they're not on the computer and they're doing that, but then coming back, uh, to check back in live with their teachers. So we would expect students to be live with their teachers each day virtually, as just as they are in person when we're here in school. Okay? Okay. I'm learning to, uh, be in a hybrid. This is so far, so good. All right.
Good practice.
We got this. All right. So let me share then just briefly, um, you heard the COVID testing results on the phone call, I think. So I'll just very, very briefly say, very good news. Our teachers were happy to hear it. The D P H today on the call, we're happy to hear. We had 641 tests that were administered. All of them were negative. Uh, again, we used the PCR testing through Stanford Hospital, which is a more accurate test. Stanford Hospital is, um, you know, premier hospital, not just here in Connecticut, but nationally. Uh, the, what Jen did over the weekend for us, the Health Director. What Jen did over the weekend for us, the health director, was break them out by band, by age band. So it was over 200 tests were administered to students between 10 and 18 years old. So all, again, all negative, and I think that's really good news. It shows, again, the level of community spread here is being very well managed, that, you know, the mitigation strategies are working. If you walk around Elm Street, or I look out my window at Locust Ave, I see people wearing masks, they put them on when they get out of their car, and they're walking around town with them. I think all of those, hand washing, social distancing, all those things work. So that's all good news and good sign. It's not to say there won't be positive cases, we know there will be. You know, we've looked at the data that Jen has been collecting through the health department over the last couple of months, and there, well, it might go a week with no cases, and another week we might have two or five cases, and another week's back to zero. So, you know, we have to recognize that. But really good news, 641 tests, all negative, and it meant a lot for our teachers and for everyone. And that surveillance, being able to do that from time to time, I think is really important, because when you hear about something going on up the road in Danbury, you worry, is that same thing happening here? And we just don't know about it. So this at least gives us a snapshot and some, you know, some feedback that it doesn't appear to be. So that's all good news. As far as our, the parent survey about returning to school or not returning to school, you know, going remote or returning to school, our numbers have held firm at about 93% of our students and families planning to come in to start the school year in person, face-to-face learning, which I think is great news. We did send out a final reminder today. I just sent it out about an hour or so ago. I know I keep sending out final reminders, but this is it, because there's about 400 students that we have not heard back for, most of them from the same, you know, families. As a result of my reminder, another 200 came in right away, so that's good. But I had to tell them, we have to close the survey out, so tomorrow at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, it's going to be closed. If you received a text or an email from me today, please just click on the link and get it done. We really want to get this done. Now, what we have to do is assume anyone who doesn't respond is in remote learning. So we're going to send them a follow-up, and our assumption is that they're going to be participating remotely, and we'll plan for them to start with the rest of the students doing remote on September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. So hopefully I hear back from everybody else. I'm going to pause, catch my breath, and if there's no other questions for me right now, I will ask Dr. Crenti to give us a quick update on our professional learning plan.
Brian, I was just going to say, you know, as an incentive for those people who haven't submitted their survey, it also means you don't get a bus, right?
That's right.
Because, so if you want your child coming to school with a bus, return the survey.
Very good. Good. Oh, well, and on the buses, we have about 48% of the students who are requesting a bus, based on the people who've returned, which is significantly less than usual. So we're working through, and you're right, Jan, we're going to move the folks in remote out of the routing in order to save some time in those bus runs as well. So, yeah. And that's good news for the buses. And again, opening in the 50% like we are will help us figure out sort of the balance with all of that. So Dr. Crenti, I think if you turn your mic on for your computer, I'll mute mine, and then you can talk directly, and I think they'll be able to hear you better.
So Dr. Lutzi, before I begin speaking, I just received word that Mrs. Pianka...
Turn yours off, please. Okay, you just have to speak right into the mic.
So as you were finishing up your comments, I just received word that Mrs. Pianka lost power. So I'm not sure if she's still there, because if she is there, we may want to try to get over to her enrollment report. Darlene, are you there?
She could be in the dark, she couldn't read it anyway.
She probably hasn't memorized, Bill.
Good point.
Okay. Well, while you're talking, I'll pull it up, and I'll get the numbers ready, just in case.
Thank you. So we have a very thoughtful week planned for our staff, and it began today with convocation and a great job by Dr. Lutzi and Mrs. Pianka. We had some wonderful messages from Katrina, as well as our union president, Vivian Birdsall. And so it was a terrific morning, and I think it just really set the tone for the year. So thank you to all those people who got that all organized this morning. As we moved into the afternoon, our principals welcomed back all of their staff, and we thought that this afternoon would be all about the teachers and getting the teachers in the right mindset as they move into the week. And so we had Janet Reed, who oversees our nurses, created Safety and Health Screencastify, which you all had the privilege of seeing when Lizette did her presentation on world language. And so she created a Screencastify on all the safety mitigations that we would want staff to follow as they're moving back into the school. And we were able to share that at each of the building levels, and it was nice because it allowed the principals to still have their meeting with their staff, have Janet send the same message to all of the buildings, and then it was followed up by the nurses at the building to help answer any questions that the staff had. We also wanted to address the staff on how to build resilience during a pandemic. So Dr. Bliss also created a Screencastify that was shared out with all of the buildings, and it was a message about, you know, how to manage anxiety and stress and other emotions that our staff may be going through as they're returning to work. And then once again, it was followed up with people at the building, our administrators, and any of the mental health professionals there able to answer questions. And then the principals went through just some simple protocols and other procedures that each of the buildings will follow. It's a little bit different at all of the different levels. Tomorrow, we have a very packed day, and we will be leading the morning off, and part of the morning will be a conversation that we're having about Appendix A, which is in our Charting the Course guidebook. And it really talks about the vision and the guiding principles and all the expectations that we would want for our students during remote and live instruction. So some of you have been asking questions about synchronous opportunities versus asynchronous opportunities. So it's a great appendix, I believe it's page 63 or around that. I've lost track of all my pages at this point, 61, 63, somewhere in there. But it really outlines what we would want for our students during this experience, and how we would want our staff to communicate and continue their instruction, taking into consideration the synchronous opportunities, having opportunities to meet with students daily, following all of their periods, their schedules. Maybe it's just to identify the lesson's purpose, maybe it's to provide a full lesson, maybe it's offer feedback, or maybe it's just to connect with the students. And then there would also be opportunities for blended experiences in that. And so our principals will be going through that tomorrow morning with the staff, which will then blend right into our live streaming. So the staff will have an opportunity to see the system that we've created for our teachers to utilize with their students when they're live streaming. And then they'll actually have an opportunity to head off into their classrooms and practice with their colleagues. So their experiences will be, what will it be for a student, and what will it be for the teacher? So you'll have half of your colleagues in one classroom and the other half in another classroom, so they really get an understanding of what it would be like for the students who are at school, and what it would be like for the students at home. All of this is in preparation, not only are they learning how to utilize the tool, but then they also have to train the students when they arrive next week. And so that's part of the training that the students will go through. In addition, I should have mentioned earlier that the building nurses are also creating presentations for all the students on safety mitigations. And so that will be shown during the beginning of the Monday for Cohort X and on Tuesday for Cohort Y. And then as we move into the afternoon, the staff will have an opportunity to break off into grade-level work. So our K through 2 staff will be working on the platform of Seesaw, and really gaining a good understanding of how to utilize the platform, and then once again, how do you train your students on how to become independent with that platform. Our grades 3 through 8 will be working in Google Classroom, and also having conversations about what types of training that they'll be providing to the students, not only for setting up for their classrooms, but also on how to care for their devices, and what those expectations will be with the devices, how they'll be coming to and from school, and how they'll be logging in, and also how they'll be getting into their live stream. And then at the high school, we have a variety of software training for new staff. There's an opportunity for them to become familiar with Schoology. But then we're also doing some other training on Screencastify for some blended learning experiences for the staff. Edgy Puzzle. We also have a virtual Labster that we'll be using in our science classes, so it gives a little bit more specific software training for the staff. Every day, we end with a faculty meeting. So we ask the teachers to come back around 2:30, 2:45, to meet as a faculty, and to answer any questions that they might have, or to share some successes, what were some moments of success that occurred throughout the day. As we move into Wednesday, Wednesday is really going back and talking about supporting our students during the pandemic, and we'll have an opportunity to share vertically about some of the students that are moving from 6th to 7th grade or 5th to 6th grade, and begin to have dialogue about that. At the high school in the morning, we'll be doing some work in block scheduling. So the high school administrators have prepared an overview for the staff, and then they'll be breaking out into departments to work on block scheduling and what this will mean for them as a department. And then in the afternoon, the K through 8 staff will be doing department and curriculum work, and the 9 through 12 will be going back into supporting their students during a pandemic. And then once again, ending that day with a faculty meeting to answer any questions. We've built in a lot of time throughout these days for staff to collaborate, for staff to plan, for staff to practice things and skills that they may have even learned the day before, to try to be as thoughtful and as prepared as they can be as the students return on Monday, the 31st. Thursday is a full department day, and what that means is it's an opportunity for departments to come together and really take a look at their units of study, talk about how those units of study may have adjusted as we're moving into the fall. We have documented the standards that we've taught from the springtime, and now it's a time to kind of transition that as you're thinking of a 7th grader going into 8th grade, and taking a look at what were some of the standards that were taught in English as a 7th grader, and what that might mean as an 8th grader. And really, the first unit of study, as the state has put out, as we have decided, and support as well, it's all about building that community, making connections with students, and having students feel very successful with their first unit of study. We don't want students to feel like they're behind. We want them to feel right where they're supposed to be. So it's our obligation to take a look at where they're coming in, to informally assess them, and then determine our next steps, whether that's through curriculum gaps, or whether that's through instructional gaps. It's our job to figure that all out, and then to keep moving them forward. And I keep joking with Lizette D'Amico, because I think she's probably got the only department, and it would be grade 6, where nothing will change, because it's the first time they're learning Mandarin, the first time they're learning French, and the first time they're learning Latin. But everything else is completely different for our students as they return in the fall. And so we want parents and students to feel very positive about their experiences coming back and confident about moving forward throughout the course of the year. And it's important that we really spend that time getting to know our students in case we do need to go into a remote environment. And then you have a good handle on where your students are socially, emotionally, and academically. And then on Friday, we'll be coming back together, and we're going to be doing some EI work, emotional intelligence work at each of the buildings, mapping out what those lessons will be, and moving forward for those first initial stages. The afternoon, we're going to continue with some curriculum work, but we also have scheduled some meet and greets. So this is an opportunity for students to zoom in with their new teachers and have an opportunity to meet them in the K-5. We're doing some things for new students to schools at Saks and at all of the high school, as well as the elementary schools. And then we have created a little kindergartner parade. So we really want them to come by the school, they've never had an opportunity to come by the school and physically see who their teacher is, who their principal is, who their assistant principal is. So they're just going to drive through the circle, and their teacher will wave to them so that they really have an opportunity to see them in person, so that they feel very comfortable coming to school on Monday. So you can see that we started kind of in that big picture, and then we kind of bring it down to department work and grade-level work, and then we bring it back out to the big picture, and then the small picture again. And it gives the teachers an opportunity, they learn, and then they go, and they have conversations with their department, they collaborate, they have conversations with their grade levels, and it will just help us to be in a better place as we move into Monday of next week. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, and just one more thing, we do have our TAs, our teaching assistants are coming to work on Thursday, and they'll be here for professional learning on Thursday and Friday as well. Thursday is really a day, once again, about learning all the safety mitigations and taking care of themselves during the pandemic. We also spend some time going through some of our mandates on bullying and suicide prevention, other things that are just part of our state requirements. And then on Friday, it's all about the technology. So it's training the teaching assistants on how to utilize the technology, and they'll be rotating through two-hour sessions throughout the day. I think that's it.
Julie?
Thank you, Dr. Crenti. So Jill, for, I'm assuming for the substitutes that you have, the, you know, the ones who are sort of your anchors at each of the schools, are they part of the staff training all this week? Are they lumped with the TAs? How is that training doing?
So as soon as they're hired, they're in. So we have, all of our long-term substitutes have been attending the training. They were here as part of the new teacher induction last week, and then they're here for all of the professional learning that we'll be doing this week. And if they're being just recommended to HR, Darlene is moving as fast as she can, meeting with them, and then we're getting them right into the training sessions.
And what was your sense today? Just, I know it's just the first day, but what was your, what was the overall feel? Did you get any feedback from administrators or from teachers themselves about how they're feeling?
I think that the day went incredibly well. I mean, I did have an opportunity to pop into a lot of sessions, that's the beauty of Zoom, because you don't have to get in your car and travel, you can just move from session to session and get a vibe for what's going on. They had great questions, but I think they were very appreciative of the time that we took to go through the safety mitigations, and then really talking about how they can care for themselves. And we will continue to answer their questions throughout the week. They vary at the level from, you know, what happens at arrival and dismissal. So now they're really starting to think about the students, and what it means in their classrooms, and how they start to transition. And so we're getting them to a place where they're getting themselves ready for the students at this point, and getting ready to dive into the instruction. I know, Brian, as you did some of your questions this morning with the staff, I think one of the things that came out apparent was they were so excited to see their kids. That was, you know, the number one, you know, that they're very excited about having their students return and getting to see them face-to-face. Sherry?
I just want to thank our extraordinary teaching staff. I mean, I'm just, I'm moved, honestly, just during this very challenging, uncertain time, for everything that our dedicated teaching staff is doing to figure this out. And I know we're all learning this new way together, but, you know, I think we also need to recognize that a lot of our teachers are parents themselves, so not only are they, you know, working overtime to figure out this new, you know, synchronous blended learning system, but they're doing that while, you know, balancing their own kids' needs. And I, again, they're the heroes of this whole story, and so I just want to say thank you. And I do want the teachers to know that I think every parent in our district after homeschooling last spring has a greater appreciation for teachers and educators, and, you know, so hopefully they know that, that they have our gratitude, and that they really are, you know, in everyone's minds, the heroes in this story. So thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, I wanted to thank, you know, in participating in the convocation this morning, Mrs. Pianka and Dr. Lutzi. Everyone did a wonderful job, I thought it was very positive, but it was also a time to acknowledge where we are, and that we have a lot of challenges ahead, and we have hard work ahead. And I want to commend our teachers. They took a huge step today in coming back to our buildings, and it was exciting even on Zoom to see them all in their classrooms, and, you know, just, it felt like a community again, even though it was virtual, and it's just our first step to moving towards being back in buildings. And, you know, here we are tonight as that next step. So I just want to thank everyone for... So I just want to thank everyone for all the incredible work. And, you know, it's going to be a big week and it's exciting. And I know our kids are getting really excited to come back as well.
Great. Then I will ask Ms. Pianca by lamplight if she is ready to give us an enrollment update.
In the interest of the continuing challenges that face us, our power just went out. And I have no idea why. But I ran downstairs and got my lanterns. So I know this looks silly and if I make a mistake because I'm in the dark, I'm doing the best I can here with a smile. So we are not in a tremendously different situation than we were when last we spoke in terms of our enrollment. Our elementary schools are pretty much the same. We were at 1501 in total and we're continuing to be there in terms of our projected enrollment as of today. Saks was at 1352 and we're at 1351 today. And New Canaan High School was at 1358 and they're at 1347. And so when last we spoke, we were at 4211. We're currently at 4199. And I think the last time we talked about this, I did also discuss with you the NESTC projection numbers. So our elementary total was projected to have been 1497. And as I said, we're currently at 1501. Our middle school enrollments were projected to have been 1319. And we are at 1351. And our high school enrollment was projected to have been 1349. And we are at 1347. And our total enrollment was projected to have been 4165. We're currently at 42, 4199. So not very much of a difference. We've continued to look at the variability in terms of sections and grade levels as a group. And unfortunately, there were some imbalances there. So we've had to look at staffing in terms of the number of students per section. And let's see, what else did I want to tell you? We also have made some recent adjustments in the interest of balancing things out to our staff children and which school they will be attending. Not in a great way, but enough to make things work for us. I think that's it for the moment. Any questions?
All right. Thank you for that update.
Awesome. Darlene?
Oh, Deanna, sorry.
Sorry, Deanna. I just, could you just speak to the high school numbers and what you, for the withdrawals from, from the prior numbers? You know, are people opting into private schools or what? Sort of what are you seeing?
Let's see. I actually, um...
What are you not seeing right now?
In the dark. I have that somewhere here. I actually was looking more at incoming students, where they were coming from. I'm really sorry, Deanna. I don't know if I'm going to be able to find that right now. Let's see. Yeah, I've got withdrawals. Let's see. I think I'm going to have to get that information for you, Deanna. I'm terribly sorry.
All right. No worries. You have interesting circumstances to deal with right now, so.
Here's some withdrawals, hang on. No high school. Sorry, we'll have to get that information to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tesper, I know you've been very busy.
Indeed, Dr. Letz, indeed. You know, we had, I just wanted to let you guys know that we had a successful ESY program this summer. It was a small program. It was just around OT and PT for our most complex learners. You know, we decided on OT and PT because that was the, the services that were the most challenging for the students to access through the distance learning. And we did that for four weeks and it was incredibly successful. It was, it was great to see the students and great to see the progress that they were making. As with all areas, special education has been hard at work, you know, preparing for the opening of school. We're, we're almost fully staffed, but I'm hoping that we'll be all set up and running Monday. If, if not, we'll be incredibly close. And we're working on developing creative ways to meet the needs of students, given the constraints with cohorting and, you know, social distancing. We have identified, because we're opening in the hybrid model, we have identified a small group of high-needs students that will be attending school daily. Those students who had the most difficulty accessing services and benefiting from the remote learning are going to be attending school daily during the hybrid model. And we have used the state criteria and guidelines to help us identify those students. We've notified families and given them the option, if they so choose, to have their son or daughter attend daily, which I think is going to be a tremendous benefit for those students. The special education administrators and I have, have also been working on a plan to deal with the backlog of all the missed PPTs and evaluations that we had from the spring. As you recall, we had primarily shut down all evalu-, well, we did shut down all evaluations and held very few PPTs. You know, but now, you know, the state is requiring us obviously to go back in and conduct those evaluations and have those PPTs as we get back to school. We are looking to hold off on those for the first few weeks in order for students, students to get acclimated back into the building and the routine and teachers to get acclimated with the students and everything that's going to be going on, which will be, you know, a new experience for everybody. But once we've been in there for a few weeks, three or four weeks, we'll begin that process in a systematic way. Recently, on the 12th of August, the state finally released their guidance for special education, giving us a whopping two weeks to take a look at that and implement it. Some of the key takeaways that I think are important for us to look at as we go forward. You know, the state really breaks it down in terms of we have a full in-person mode, a hybrid mode, and a distance learning mode. And if we're in the full in-person mode, it's our responsibility to implement IEP as it's written and as it's been developed. So that's our responsibility if we go back into a full in-person mode. In the hybrid mode, which we're going to open the school in, our responsibility is to implement all the services in the IEP. But the manner in which we implement those services, there's some flexibility around that. So for example, if a student is scheduled to have a learning center class at the high school and is scheduled for five days a week, well, normally that would be five days a week in person. But we have the flexibility to do, you know, two days a week in person and three days a week remotely. So there's some leeway there. We have to implement all the services, but how we do that is, you know, there's some flexibility there. If we, if the whole district needs to go into a full-distance mode, the state hasn't really given us clear guidance on what that would look like in terms of the special ed implementation of the IEP. We're kind of waiting for that to come forward in the next few weeks. But there are, they did give us some guidelines for those families that are voluntarily choosing not to send their child to school at this time. And as of today, there were, at least the last time we calculated, there are 40 students with IEPs that were voluntarily choosing to stay home and do, take advantage of remote or distance learning. In that case, you know, the state is telling us that we are obligated to implement the IEP to the greatest extent feasible. Similar to, to the springtime, just a little change in the wording from possible to feasible. And what that means in terms of how we're going to approach that, it'll be a conversation with the special education administrator at each of the levels, the staff working with the student, and the families. We'll have that conversation about, you know, what's feasible for us to do for their child if they're doing full-distance learning. The state is requiring us to fill out a form, they've created a new form, which is probably not surprising from the state, called the Learning Model IEP Implementation Plan. And we're required to fill that out for every student who we are deviating from their IEP as written. So whether we deviate slightly for the student who's in school and we're, we're full in school and instead of, you know, doing a push-in model for a speech and language and we're doing a pull-out, we have to write that plan for that student under those conditions. And then what is the plan for that student under a hybrid model? And then what is the plan for that student if we go out full, remote? So that's going to be an added layer of paperwork for us to go through as we, we progress through the year. You know, the start of the year. For those students who are electing to start the year remotely, we are working on getting those forms filled out and we'll have them sent out to families because we need to give them the opportunity to make an informed decision about what the services will look like if they were in-person, hybrid, or they're choosing to do the full remote. So they'll have a, they'll be fully informed in the choice that they're making. Because it's a, you know, by presenting them with their student's IEP and how we're going to implement it fully in-person and in the hybrid and the choice to go remote, you know, we're offering them FAP, the Free Appropriate Public Education. And we need to let them know, here's what it would be and here's what it's going to be based on everything we can do and the resources that we have through the remote model. So we'll work on those, getting those out by midweek hopefully for all those families that have chosen to start remotely. And then the other thing that we, is another complication, you know, as we start the school year, you know, we're held to all the timelines of IDEA in terms of the evaluations and PPTs. So in addition to kind of making up the backlog that we've had over the last, you know, several months of closure, all the students whose IEP dates or annual review dates are coming up in the fall, all the evaluations that are due in the fall, those all have to be kept up with on time in addition to kind of going back and picking up the pieces. But one of the things that I'm really stressing with the administrators and staff when I met with them prior to this week, you know, I really feel it's important for the kids to be in class with their teachers. I don't want to start out the year saying, okay, I need to take this student to test and this student to test. That's, to me, that's not a good choice of their, way to spend their time. They should be in class with their teachers, with their peers in classes and establishing that relationship. And then we'll go back and we'll start to look at after a few weeks into the school year, okay, now let's start tackling this pile of, you know, paperwork and evaluations and so forth that we need to do as we, as we get a little bit into the school year. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Deanna?
Deanna?
So it's actually not a question, Bill. I just wanted to thank you and your staff for, you know, the unbelievable amount of work that you've done to, to get this program up and running for this year. I think about the paperwork ahead of you and I'm always interested who actually reads that paperwork. But with that said, thank you. And I know our special education families particularly, thank you, so.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Dr. Keating?
Good evening.
Be a good time for an update on COVID-related financials and other things. Thank you.
Sure. So I'll start with food service. We're going to have some changes with regards to food services as we start the new school year. We are going to start with a modified menu for the children with less choices than they've had in the past so that we can streamline serving in the cafeterias. The principals at the elementary level are basically individualizing by school based on the size and shape of their cafeterias. But for the most part, they're going to have some of the grade-level classes eat in the classrooms for the first three, four, or five weeks, depending on how the service actually works out once the kids are getting used to going through the cafeteria in a much different way than they have in the past. Social distancing will be adhered to and we're marking up the floors and so forth. And all the lunch tables have plexiglass dividers at the elementary level in Saks to keep the children separated. So that's what we're going to be doing at the elementary level. At Saks, we're going to have all students, all teams, per grade level, eating in the cafeteria. We're going to have two teams in the cafeteria and two teams in the auxiliary gym. So the students will go between those two areas. They can fit, there's a tremendous amount of space and we can accommodate them. Again, they're going to have a modified menu to choose from as we start out. The high school students will be eaten in cafeteria as well. And Bill has worked out their schedule. A modified grab-and-go type of menu will be used in the beginning of the year. And we will, again, step into more choices as we get into the school year and the students, you know, and we have more data to go on with regards to, you know, the health situation, the safety situation. We do plan to have a good program for our kids. The kids that eat in the classroom at the elementary level will have a backed lunch, a folded-back lunch. But the kids who eat in the cafeteria will have a hot lunch choice to choose from. So that's the cafeteria. We are ready to go. We're excited about it. One thing I should mention on the cafeteria as well is we're moving from the POS system with Solana to a product called Titan. And in doing so, we're going to be changing our online payment vendor. So parents will receive a notification this week within the next day or so on how to do that. So that's something you should be aware of. So with regards to transportation, the transportation routes are completed. Roy today sent out his last notification to the kindergarten families. And I believe he told me around five o'clock this afternoon, he was already getting calls. So people are reading the details of that information that he sent out. We do expect ridership to be decreased significantly, at least at first. And as, as Brian mentioned, 48% is significantly below what we currently have in the 70s with regards to transportation. We are taking all the precautions necessary. Last week, Daco met with the drivers from Daco and they went through all of the safety protocols that are in place. I sent out the documentation this afternoon to the cabinet. And they also went through all of the cleaning protocols that they're going to put in place, which is between the morning runs and at the end of the day, so it'd be twice a day, similar to what we're doing in a lot of areas in the school. And MSDS sheets are available for parents to look at. We'll put that online as well. So that's well underway. With regards to the custodians, they've had a remarkable challenge this summer just getting prepared and really supporting a lot of the safety measures that we put in place. The schools are clean, they're looking good. We still have the last push of this week to go through. And we're confident that the students will return next Monday to some really clean and safe buildings. We put up signage, or we will be putting up signage around the school so that the students do know what is expected of them, like on the front doors, you'll see. Masks must be worn, safety protocols must be adhered to. And then within the school, there'll be very simple, easy-to-read listings of how the students need to behave within the school. On Friday, the schools did receive their PPE. So with the exception of a few items here and there that we're receiving early this week, all of our teachers will have their masks, the student masks, the shields, hand sanitizers for both themselves personally and then students, and any gloves, we have gloves provided for them. And any other thing that they really would like to have in terms of their PPE, I think we've covered within our master list. But we're certainly here to provide and accommodate them as best we can. So the school should be prepared to open up. This school, the roof is almost completed. We're close to finalizing that. I think there's one area of the library that is to be finished and they'll be out of there. And the solar projects mobilized already. So the electricians are starting to put the connections up on the roof and bring all of the conduit and so forth. So we'll have a nice solar project completed within the next month or so at that school. With regards to the finances, we're just closing in on 2019-2020 school year. And I did receive late this afternoon the final report in draft form from Terry Lizeg, who is our staff accountant, which is like amazing that we have it done on the 24th, given everything else that we're doing. So I'm going to review that, but the preliminary numbers appear to reflect that we're going to be returning $2,112,000 to the town for that fiscal year. So that's the end of, in the plus by that amount for last year. With regards to the current year, what we've spent on COVID thus far is $968,000. With regards to the current year, what we've spent on COVID thus far is $968,000 of that lapsing account, so we've overspent it that by 568. And the significant increases in cost from our last report, which was $500,000 and change, I think it was just south of $600,000. Deal with technology, you know, we've had some additional PPE costs and some additional individualized supply type of costs, but the bulk of it has been on communication pieces within the classroom, so that the teachers have speakers and the students have some audio to come back out of that. So the communication between the hybrid learning environment is enhanced, and a lot of work went into that during our retreat between Jill and Brian and others to really capture something that's going to work well. We've also upgraded the webcams to a document camera with audio on it, so those are pending receipt, but those have been purchased. And we've also, another large expenditure that we've put in place is for the Wi-Fi expansion, both inside, so we have a point-to-point connection within each classroom space, and then we're covering exterior space at Saks and the high school, and that exceeded $100,000. We will look to the elementary schools to see what we can do to enhance some of the exterior learning experiences for Wi-Fi as well. That's going to be almost like a phase two. We hope to have the engineers look at that very shortly to make that happen. But that's where we stand right now, and happy to answer any questions.
Do we want to just announce again that, starting, when school starts, we're going to have to close the campuses because of all the outside education that we're doing with the students?
Absolutely.
Just so that the community knows, I don't know if we're going to have signage up, that this is something we're, we didn't want to have to do. We've enjoyed the fact that the community has been able to come onto the campuses and during the day, but that with all the students outside, we're just not going to be able to handle that this year. And I just think that want people to know so they're not surprised.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Let me think about how best to message that. Maybe I'll speak with the first selectmen as well, maybe an upcoming out call can even include something along those lines. Your point's spot on. I mean, this is really, it's just, we have to make hard decisions, no visitors into our buildings. You know, our buildings are vibrant places all day long usually, and this year we're not going to have PTC or PFA meetings in our buildings and things like that, so it's another one of those decisions we have to make for our campus. I'll talk to Kevin, and we'll figure out the best way to get that, get the word out.
Great.
And just on that, well, in a similar way, the road is still going in here at the end by the tennis courts. I don't know if you took a look at that or not. It's not ready to be driven on quite yet, but I'm being told it will be before we open our doors on Monday. So that's good news that folks, for our traffic flow going through, they'll be able to drop off in the front here in the high school and go out through Waveney as we had discussed. So the work is ongoing.
And because we know so many more parents are going to be driving their students, have we figured out traffic flow for the elementary schools and for Saks?
John, Captain DeFederico met with principals, and I know he's been talking with Rory as well, and they went around and did that. I don't know if they've quite yet sketched out the final plan, but they're definitely working on it. They walked each site and did some work together, so.
Terrific. I know the high schools communicated pretty clearly traffic flow patterns and expectations for morning and afternoon, which has been helpful, so with the new road included.
Yeah, which really got the wheels turning on getting that road done.
Yeah.
I'd just say a shout-out to Tiger. He has worked very hard to make that happen for us. It's been a very good collaborative effort between the town and the schools.
Well, and in that same vein, I want to thank Tiger and his crew for everything they did to get the schools ready for today. You know, he and I spoke last week, and said, you know, the, usually when we get our buildings ready, we work backwards from the first day of school with kids. And last week, we talked, we said, no, no, let's work, we need to work backwards from our first day of school with our staff, because we want everyone coming in to know that we're thinking about them, that we're planning this out, that we're ready for them. So he, of course, he called me the next day to say, are they all going to the high school? And I had to say, no, all five buildings have to be ready. And he staffed up and he got it done for us. And the buildings, the outside looked great, the inside looked great, it really made a big difference. That wouldn't have happened without Tiger. He got it done for us.
I agree, and the paving driveway, the new paving on the high school looks great too. So, yeah, huge shout-out to Tiger, thank you.
Brendan?
Yeah, were we going to talk about where we are from kind of a budget standpoint and then non-lapsing accounts as well, or are we not going to discuss that tonight?
Well, I'll jump in, and anyone's welcome to add any more details, but the, we can certainly talk about the non-lapsing piece. The budget is a little challenging, only that because Joanne and her department has been working day and night to close out the 1920. So, you know, our next meeting typically is where we'll do the rundown on the 1920 and the expenditures and, you know, go through the transfers and what have you. But certainly, more conversation about the non-lapsing, if you like, we're glad to engage with that. And Joanne, if I, if you do have more information or whatever, if I misspoke, feel free.
Oh, sure, we do have the accounting on the non-lapsing account. We received $400,000, and to date, we have spent $964,000. So we are over by that 564 that I just, that I mentioned just a few minutes ago. I think that where we are right now, it's very hard to tell for 2021 with any kind of definiti, until we have all of the salaries encumbered for the year, because we do have, we have salary implications to COVID. And just starting with the custodial staff, we are hiring two custodians, we need them. And we were asked at the Board of Finance, well, why can't you contract out and do overtime or whatever? Dan and I have planned, really taken a look at the requirements for cleaning and laid out the schedules for every staff member and how long, we've measured how long it takes to do the different procedures using custodial. And we definitely feel like we need these two custodians, one at Saks and one at the high school. In addition to that, we're going to have one hour of overtime for every single staff member at the elementary level every day and while school's in session. And we may need to do weekends. There is a tremendous amount of disinfecting that we have to do, not only at the end of the day, which we've never done before, but also during the day. So we have disinfecting of the cafeteria and the bathrooms, and this is new work. So we need to overlap our staff at the elementary level in the middle of the day, which we've never done before. It's always been one shift, and then the next shift comes in. We did have a mid-shift at one point, but the work wasn't the same. So, you know, those are things that we have to take into account. They're not part of the 964 right now. And then there's teaching implications that we have to consider, supervisory implications, and substitutes. So there's a lot that we need to consider, and that's why I believe the board has been strong about their position of, you know, fund up that amount of laps in account. So that's where we stand. I think I told the Ed Resources Committee a month or so ago, I don't feel, I do think it's risky, I think that was a word that you used in your letter to the town, Katrina, to overspend when you don't, we don't have that appropriation. It is risky, and we have to spend this money in order to open school. Though we're literally between a rock and a hard place here.
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned and, you know, frankly, very disappointed, and I hate to, I really don't want to be negative about it because there's so much positive that you all are doing in, you know, getting everything ready, getting the entire community behind you. But, you know, for the Board of Finance, you know, maybe other town bodies too, to ask us to start school, you know, at least based on the numbers you just threw out, it's probably at least $900,000, a million dollars, something like that in the red, you know, it's just not where we should be as a community. It's not where, you know, this board should be, it's not where the administration should be, and, you know, we shouldn't be asked to subject ourselves to an appropriation process in the middle of everything else that, you know, that you all are doing. So I would hope that, you know, the community gets behind the public schools and the Board of Ed and asking the Board of Finance to, you know, to fully fund our budget, particularly in the context of what our budget has been over the last five years. This year, it's down 0.6%, you know, and I think, I think with this year, it's, I want to say it's 1.4% on a compounded annual basis for the last five years, which is well below inflation. So, you know, obviously, the town has, you know, supported the Board of Ed and the Kanan Public Schools for many years, but this is a really critical time, we need to make sure that the budget's fully funded.
Deanna?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Brendan said. I'm listening to all the work that everyone is doing and how much, how hard everyone is working to get these schools opened and address so many different needs of so many different learners in this community. I frankly was, and I'm, you know, I'm a little insulted, and I think we all should be insulted by the lack of support that we're getting by our Board of Finance on this, you know, and I don't say that lightly, I understand, but to use words like blank check in an email, when we were requesting this money, one, I think the public needs to understand, and Brendan, you did a good job last time, we underspent our budget by $2 million last year. Joanne just said $2.1 million is the new number, and that money is in the town's general fund. The general fund has grown to over $35 million, which is significantly more than what the rating agencies have requested us to hold to be a AAA-rated credit. That money is not a blank check. It has been specifically designated, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, for only COVID-related expenses, and it is, it is not a blank check. So to have people say that, those kind of things in an environment where, you know, this is a pandemic, and I know, you know, we've all said this, that general fund is there for emergencies, and if it is not going to be used in emergency situations, it shouldn't exist, we're overtaxing taxpayers, in my humble opinion. So I'm insulted by, by the lack of cooperation, and you were really moderated, Brendan, in your remarks. I am, quite frankly, I don't think it's showing good partnership in this really unprecedented time.
Thank you. You know, and I would just add, you know, we have been in conversations with the Board of Finance, and, you know, we made a strong push and I think a real effort to communicate the reasons why and the situation that we're in, and reminding, you know, everyone that we are in the middle of a pandemic and these are unbudgeted items, and these are things that, you know, involve the health and safety of preparing our buildings for reopening. So it's unfortunate that we are where we are, and, you know, unless something changes this week, you know, we'll have to move forward with next steps in appropriation with the town.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, I get what we're saying, I still think, you know, they have their job to do too, they're steward of the town's taxes and the taxpayers' money. You know, I guess we'll see what the next step is and how drawn out it is, if it's a quick, you know, come to the meeting and you get the appropriation, so then I think it would be reasonable. If it gets to be a long, drawn-out process, like a budgeting cycle process, then I think we have a lot of reason to be, you know, to start to wonder what's going on. But, you know, I think if it's just a matter of budget mechanics, come to the appropriation, you get the money, and which is what I sort of, you know, shouldn't use, you know, blank check, I guess, but, you know, I think they're trying to describe a process, and I think if we follow it, I don't see why we wouldn't get the, we wouldn't get the money. It's not like, you know, we didn't spend our $8 million budget yet, we still have, you know, so I think a month is reasonable to, you know, for them to go through their process.
Penny, and then Julie.
I appreciated the comments by the Board of Finance where they said that they very much supported the schools, and they basically indicated to me, and I think to all of us, that they wanted us to go ahead and purchase these items, that we need to open school even though they're not within our current budget. I think it does, you know, I don't, I think that they should fill that gap quickly. We are hoping to keep school in session all year long. It's incredibly complicated, as you can see from today's meeting, to, the business that we're in is much more complicated this year, looking forward, than it was last year, and we need the resources to depend on it. I know Brian has talked with lots of other districts, I happen to have talked with, like, one recently, and they were having a hard time getting all the equipment that they needed. So I just wanted to commend our administration for being so good and going out last spring. We have the PPE, we have the plexiglass, we have the Wi-Fi. This is all going to help us, you know, I think, try to maintain the education, and I think that the hole that we're in, that we've, you know, already stated, ought to be filled quickly. I mean, this is like doing a project, it's like doing a building project, we're building a new kind of a school, and every single project needs a contingency, because there are expected unknowns, and we know that they're going to happen. So it's, I think you just, like in a building project, like in doing Saks, like in doing the high school, doing elementary schools, you had to fund a contingency. If we were building the budget last fall, knowing that we were going to have a pandemic, we would have had a million-dollar or $1.5 million line item in there saying, we don't know what it's going to be yet, we just know it's going to be extraordinary, and we need to protect our teachers and our students and maintain the best atmosphere. So I know that the Board of Finance wants to support us, but I think that they have to sort of make a, it's not really a leap, but they just need to not have us start out in the, in the red. It's almost, which seems to me by them, it's a bet that we're not going to succeed in our effort, that we're, they're thinking that we're going to go all virtual and won't need the money potentially. So I don't think that's the message that we want to be sending out. We'll return the money, it's, if we don't use it as we did last year. And so I appreciate the partnership that they're offering, but I would like to see that non-lapsing account filled with another million dollars.
Julie?
Yes, I think part of what bothered me was, in the comments that came across was almost a lack of confidence, and Penny, you sort of said it, like, almost saying, well, we're not sure this is going to work out in the way you've planned it, and so we're not ready to set aside that money for you yet. And I guess one of my concerns, and Joanne, maybe you can answer this, is if we don't have that money, if it does take the process of going to Town, to the Board of Finance and then going to the town council, that lag, does that, will that, could that affect, you know, our purchasing, getting things to our vendors, getting things in our schools? You know, that's my concern, and I just, I was disappointed in the Board of Finance decision, and I know that they have been partners with us, and I know they will continue to be partners with us, but it seemed as though, I don't know if it's a lack of trust or just not fully understanding where we are, but it was disappointing.
Deanna?
And I just wanted to respond to Bob, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, the respect for the Board of Finance's role, but in this time where our administration and staff are running at 120 miles an hour, to require them to come back in on another night of the week, pull them away, you know, because you don't just go into a Board of Finance meeting willy-nilly. There is a presentation that's presented, a lot of effort and work goes into showing up for those meetings, and a lot of time, because, you know, you don't know where you're going to be on the agenda, you know, you could be there for hours after a very long day, and, you know, I understand that that's what our administration does, but to me, in this time, I don't want them spending time revisiting our budget because, you know, the Board of Finance decides that they want to have, you know, a revisit of every line item on the budget, because basically, that's what will happen, and that's what, you know, the way the budget process works is, we are supposed to get an allocation, and after that, only the Board of Ed decides how it's used. There are not supposed to be any, there's not supposed to be any interference from any member of another board in the town. once they've allocated the budget. And by having us come back and, you know, constantly, you know, validate everything, we've said, this is only going to be COVID expenses. This lapsing account is only going to be COVID expenses. It can't be for anything else. They're really trying to revisit every other line item of the budget, even though they would never say that overtly. So, to me, it is not fair to our administration to have to be diverted into, in a much more extended budget process.
Yeah, sorry, just to add on to that. I mean, it's akin, I completely agree with Deanna. It's akin to them basically, you know, forcing a decision on us, right, where we have to say, right now, you know, we're relying on an appropriation to pay to actually meet our budget, which means one of two things happens. We either don't spend money on things that we need to keep, you know, everybody in our schools safe, which are COVID-related expenses, or we don't fund other accounts. Like, we don't hire the teachers that we need because we have to spend money on COVID expenses, right? So, we're headed into a school year, and we don't know how we're going to actually spend, you know, satisfy all the expenses that we have. It's just totally, I just think it's totally unfair and not, definitely not the right call for this community.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Kitting, any, was there anything else related to financials?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. All right. Any other?
No, we put discussion on the end, but I think we've had discussion throughout.
We had a healthy discussion. I think in summary, I just want to, you know, wrap up on a positive note, because I want to go back to, you know, what Brendan said. It's, it's incredible, the work and the progress that has been made since March. I mean, when you think about, and, you know, as I was preparing for convocation, I thought back to March, and I, it's almost unbelievable how much has happened since then and what's taken place in this district. And, you know, we went, we've been from closing our buildings to going to distance learning in a heartbeat, and just persevering through that and multiple delays in our school, you know, return, and then never, never actually returning to school, and then caring for our seniors and thinking about how will we honor them and honor everyone that's graduating from, you know, our different buildings, and this summer and not knowing, you know, what our plans would entail. And so, it's a big, it was a big day today, and I, I just feel, you know, I know the Board agrees with me on this, that we're just really proud of all the work and the progress. And, you know, whatever what's, you know, whatever is ahead, we have a solid plan in place, and, you know, I'm confident and have faith in the great work ahead, and our teachers and our students, they're ready. And I think, you know, what we know is that our community is in this together, and, you know, we have a long road ahead, and we'll, we'll make it happen, and it's going to be great. I know it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And so, now we'll move on to goals, our next action item.
Great. I had shared the goals out on Saturday with the Board. Hopefully, had an opportunity to take a look at it. Would you like me to, I can share them on my screen here, if that's the best way for the group to work through it, unless everyone, no. Okay. That's why I ask. See, I don't presume. Then, we, should I have a copy of the goals, and what we're glad to discuss, take through? As you saw, we cleaned them up and really just put into red the significant changes, you know, from draft to draft, some small, some large. The, I guess I'll just touch base on some of the changes and interrupt for conversation or questions or anything. The, let's see, probably largest, or the first is, would be 2C. Given the conversation about the block schedule, as you recall, the initial draft had that as one, just about implementing the block schedule, but we wanted to, given the feedback and the conversation, thought it would make an awful lot of sense to provide ongoing updates to the Board that include academic, social, emotional, and physical goals and anticipated outcomes for students in the various scenarios. So, to have a report that comes from the high school to the Board, perhaps sometime this fall, and then probably another one a little bit later on in the year, as far as just where we are, and, you know, looking at some of those goals and metrics as were identified. So, I know there was some question about the block schedule, so we thought making that an ongoing conversation with the Board would be a good step. And, Julie?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Julie, and then Deanna.
Okay. So, actually, on that point, I wondered if it made sense, because I know one of the questions we had last time was whether the plan is, I know you said the block scheduling is for now, for during the COVID, but if the potential is there to continue it after, and I didn't know if we wanted to add something to that particular one, something like, and continue investigating the viability of ongoing implementation, or something like that. I mean, I don't know if we want it, if that's part of that goal, is to be thinking about whether this is something we're continuing or not, or if that goal is just supposed to stay for the moment, you know, for this.
Yep. Well, I was thinking, in writing this, I was thinking that the, part of the reporting out would inform that next decision, you know, and discussion.
Okay.
Around, you know, does it continue? How is it adjusted? There may be changes. There may be, you know, it'll, things could evolve based on that conversation. So, I was thinking that part of the reporting out, it wouldn't only be given today, but here are our goals for this schedule, and then get some feedback around how well it's meeting those goals in order to continue to inform the decision.
Right. Okay. So, are we including it all? I guess what I'm not getting out of that is, is whether we're evaluating the viability of it beyond this year. And I don't know if that's part of what we want to have as that goal, you know what I'm saying?
It could be hard to, because this is going to be such a disrupted year.
Okay.
Right? So, I think what we'd look to do is get feedback from the teachers and the administrators here in the high school about, you know, sort of their feeling around future plans, the viability of it. To create an evaluation system to apply in a year that's as unpredictable as this one, I think would be, could be really challenging, right? But let's, let's take their cue from them when they come before us and get some feedback.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion.
Deanna.
So, I had some similar concerns to Julie's in the, in the language of this item, and I appreciate some of the adjustments that were made based on the discussion, only because, you know, if you look at the, if you look at the language of the next goal related to the, to SACS, you're talking about evaluating a system. And so, if you look at C, if I read that, it's saying we're implementing a block schedule, and it doesn't just say for next year, it says, we're implementing a block schedule. And so, to me, and I want to preface my comments with, I don't really have a strong opinion yet about if it's a good or a bad thing, but I do know that there are lots of strong opinions around block scheduling, and I think we need to hear them all, and as a Board, evaluate them. So, I would like to make it clearer that this is, because I know that we are looking at possibly doing this going forward, or at least we've been talking about it previously. So, maybe we add something like, evaluate implementation of a block schedule, but I know that we're doing a block schedule this year. So, I don't, you know, maybe we add language says, implement a block schedule during, you know, COVID education and evaluate implementation for, you know, I, you know, or just evaluate implementation of a block schedule, because this is an odd year, and we're doing this, you know, as a, as a way to deal with the COVID learning situation. So, but I think this is, I don't like that this makes it sound like this is a done deal, even though it does say we're going to look at it. It says we're implementing a block schedule, and it doesn't say only for this year.
Right.
So, how about?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Penny.
I was going to say, you could add just a second sentence to C that says something like, without overburdening the administration, the teachers this year, just to say, you know, you know, to the extent feasible, evaluate the appropriateness, appropriateness of a block schedule in a post-pandemic school year.
Sure.
Just something.
One of the challenges will be, we'll be doing the evaluation in a pandemic school year.
Right. That's what I'm saying, to the extent, to the extent feasible.
Right. As we mentioned before, you know, the, we were doing work on this, as you mentioned, and we were doing research. We had site visits and doing other things. We had to accelerate the timeline on this because of the reality of where we are, right, and that, and the understanding that the block schedule helps academically for a variety of reasons that they put together, but also because of this, it strengthens the mitigation measures, right? So, there's that part of it. That's where, we tried to be broad in the language around, don't just tell me why it's good in the pandemic. Tell me what your goals would be for students academically, socially, emotionally, physically, like in those dimensions that I think would transcend the pandemic, right? So, you know, the academic goals of this, like, what are the anticipated positive outcomes of doing this, and having them come early to identify that, and then, you know, later on, get some updates around it. But I'm not against it. I guess my, if your sense of hesitation from me, it's simply, I don't want to put, I don't want to create an expectation that if COVID's gone, we go back to the way things were, because there were limitations in the schedule that existed in the past as well. So, I don't want to, you know, lose the, what we learned throughout this experience and have to, and go back, and then start building, working towards a positive result from scratch. That's, that's, so I don't know if that makes sense, but that's my hesitation, if you sense it.
So, next year, if it's not a pandemic world, and we go back to quote-unquote "normal", what would the goal be? Would you, do you want to do block scheduling continuing or no?
I think there's some at the high school that do, some that don't, and they need to, you know, use this year to provide some, you know, do some analysis based on their, their goals around that. But, yeah, I think that having an improved schedule in place is the goal.
But, so it sounds like some of the hesitation, though, is, we're not sure, we're not sure in total if we, if we like it, right, as a Board, right? That's what I'm.
Right. I can say with some pretty good confidence that the team that was doing the work at the high school was working towards bringing a proposal to the Board for a block schedule like this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, what?
So, why don't they bring it after this year?
Just a year sooner than they were ready to do that.
Right. So, why don't they bring it this year, and, you know, and we'll evaluate if they want, if we want to do it ongoing.
I think that's what the, the goal alludes to, is that we would have ongoing updates. So, we, you know, through that process of the updates, we would hear the feedback as it's going this year, and, you know, be able to say with some.
Right. But an update sort of like how it's working, that doesn't mean, do we want to continue, right? So, giving us updates throughout the year is kind of giving us an update on how it's going, and that might inform the decision whether we want to continue it or not, but that doesn't mean we just continue it without discussing it and.
And you need the high school to make that recommendation, right? So, because it's the high school team, it's, it's a building-based, you know, the Board of Ed sets the start and end time of the day, and the building administrative team and cooperation, you know, brings forward ideas around their scheduling and how their use of time throughout the course of, you know, the day. So, you don't want the, it really, and we've said this from the start, it really needs to come from them, right? From the administration, from the folks who are doing, doing the work and, you know, doing the research.
I would love, I would love to see something in the scheduling, too, where you have some flex time in the morning for people that want late start. They can maybe, maybe you can accommodate it via scheduling. How does that fit into this? Like, you know, the late start thing is still sort of sitting out there, but maybe there's a lower-cost way to deal with it if we're looking at scheduling anyway.
Well, and, again, the nuances of the block will answer some of that, right? Because it's a four-period a day, rotating block, and so.
Right. There's a lot of pieces that.
It doubles the chances that a student's going to have at least one free period, you know, each cycle, if not more often, the way that it all works. So, it may, it may help towards some of the, the sleep needs things, but you need to understand exactly how it's all been built first, right, which is, which was the first part. But again, I'm not against, you know, the, whatever the Board, the language that you're talking about is making maybe more explicit what the intentions were of this, of the language here. I just, again, don't want it, I don't want it to be either or, that, I don't want to give the impression we go right back necessarily. I want to make sure we continue to learn and grow.
Brendan.
Yeah, can I just make a suggestion that we add for consideration for future years at the, at the end of this, so that it's clear that the updates, you know, and the evaluation is around future years. Does that make sense to you, Deanna, in terms of?
Yeah, I think that's good. I, because I, what I don't want this to be is, is, you know, it may be the perfect thing to do, and a wonderful idea, and great for kids, and students, you know, for their health and everything, but I don't know that, and I know that there is resistance in this community to a block schedule, and I want to, I want to hear that from those people. I want to hear, so as part of it, I would like to hear from parents and students, and I would also like to hear from faculty, because I did get feedback from faculty and parents about this schedule and their concern. So, I just, I want to make sure that we're addressing all of that, and it may be the absolute right thing to do, but I want to make sure that we're doing it thoughtfully, and not just because it's, you know, something that we wanted to do, and, and this is an easy transition to do it.
Okay. So, we want to go back to the, oh, Jen has a comment.
I totally agree. I think that's a really good idea to put at the end. I mean, I know that we did talk about doing block scheduling, and, and that they were working on something to present to us, but, you know, I know the big driver was passing times and keeping kids together for longer times, but to vote on this, I mean, I, again, like, this might be the perfect thing. I just don't know enough about it to vote and to completely change the high school's schedule, you know, because of COVID. But again, it might be, you know, the right thing, but I would love to kind of revisit after our year, just to make sure it's the right thing.
Okay. So, it sounds like there's some support for that added language at the end. You got it?
For consideration in future years.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay.
Great. Thank you for that suggestion. Moving on.
Yep. Then, on three, we broke apart the biology review and the chemistry review with their alignment, just understanding that they're, they're different courses, and just to be as clear as we can be.
Brian, you can remove indicator F because it's repetitive from D.
It is. Thank you, Jen. Of course, the, it's 5E. It'll change as we do the deletions, but taking the time to train our students and staff and the use of the learning management systems, okay, 12?
So, can I actually ask about that? So, so, letter E and letter G, in E, it has train students and staff, and then G is identify and train teachers and leaders. I just wondered if, if there was any way to, like, there just seemed to be a little bit of overlap there? Or am I misreading it?
Sure. No, there is, and we can probably remove G. I think that the thought of it was, when we identify those teacher leaders, we take them further. You know, they go deeper into it, they learn more, they, they become more expert in it, and then they're able to provide support and help.
Okay. I also think that we're still, after the pandemic, we do need to evaluate whether we want to move Schoology into the middle school. So, there was a conversation two years ago, and it was actually part of our budget for this upcoming year, and then we removed it in the springtime to move Schoology into the middle school, because it's certainly a much more robust learning management system. And with all that was happening, it wasn't fair to ask teachers to try to learn a new learning management system and get ready for virtual learning, especially since we knew the timeframe for the high school was about, about a year, year and a half of training that took place for them to fully implement. So, I think that was also part of the intention of G, was to keep that there and train some of the teacher leaders and see if it's a move that we want to make for the future.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so we're leaving it as is?
Sure.
Okay.
I want to ask a question on an earlier one.
Bob, just speak in your mic so they can hear you online.
I want to ask a question on an earlier one. Is it all right to go back up a little bit? The standards-based grading.
Can you refer, number?
That's 1E.
Okay.
I know, I know that's been on there for, for many, many years. I'm not sure if people love it. I've, so I don't know if there's any discussion around, do I've, so I don't know if there's any discussion around, do we, do we keep that? Do we want to, do we want to continue that?
So this is actually a continuation over from last year because we were never able to report out our research to the Board of Education in the springtime. So we didn't have an opportunity to go out and survey the stakeholders, the teachers, the parents, in order to make a thoughtful decision about whether we wanted to remove the standard-based grading in science at the middle school.
Got it.
So a year ago, when we had that conversation, we were like, can we just make a decision about whether we keep standard-based grading in science, move forward with additional standard-based grading at the middle school, or remove it completely? And so we just never were able to get that full research and the report out to all of you.
So that's what this is?
So that was a continuation from last school year.
Got it. So then we would do that...
Yes, so in hopes that we can come forward and give some conclusions to the Board of Education and do a report.
Got it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Goal two is communications and the COVID-19 communications plan. I think the website, I know the website is working well. Lots and lots of hits. Goal three, goal four. Let's see. So we've updated our objective one, which is review, revise, implement school and district climate plans system-wide. The evolution of that work continues. And let's see. If we go into two, under goal four, it's to, the goal, this is the brand-new goal, or brand-new objectives under the goal two. Understand and communicate efforts to expand and increase educational equity, diversity, and inclusion throughout the district with a long-term focus on identifying and remedying gaps and strengthening ongoing efforts. Two A is to collaboratively initiate a process to develop a district-wide statement on equity, diversity, and inclusion, using a skilled facilitator as an experienced guide. Again, that came directly from the board's conversation at our last meeting, talking about sort of timelines and process and make, and doing, doing things correctly. B is continue to provide professional development for facilities, for faculty and staff focused on increasing awareness of issues of equity, improving cultural humility, and increasing culturally proficient and responsive educational practices. C is to highlight existing educational opportunities available to students focused on increasing sensitivity towards issues of DIE and preparing them as global citizens. To D, continue our part, our partnership, continue partnering with NC Care and other community agencies to develop and/or offer parent education on issues of DIE. Continue to provide students with culturally responsive learning experiences and to expanding culturally responsive literature. And then F is to present an update on social studies curriculum, including efforts to expand content and alignment with K-12 social studies. What we tried to do with the language here is sort of, and based on the conversation we had with, with the board last time we talked about the goals, was to really make sure that it was clearly about kind of building our understanding of our, of our efforts across the district, really looking to make explicit the opportunities that are here for students, for families, for others, to engage in this work. And we, while we absolutely believe that it transcends discipline, a place to start seemed to me, seemed, social studies seemed to be the right place to start. It's been a while since we've had an update on the social studies curriculum. We know that quite a bit has been going on, and so we felt like that, that's a good place to begin. And then, you know, in the future, we'd look for other, other disciplines to do a similar report out. So there's some modification of the language that way because we did feel, again, we all know there's so many very, well, vital compete, interests that we're all in the midst of, but we want to make sure that we continue to, to move this work forward, you know, for the board across the district.
Sherry?
So I just first want to say that I strongly support the adoption of this goal. I think at this moment in history, it's imperative for us as educational leaders to adopt this goal, and I, I truly believe that this goal will result in an improved experience for all New Canaan public school students. I just had a few small changes that I wanted to suggest. The first is on A, I'd like to replace the word facilitator with expert because I think the idea there is to make sure that as we develop this collaborative district-wide statement, that we have the right expertise in the room. So rather than, I mean, I think anyone can facilitate, but I think it's making sure that we have the right experts in the room, that we're hearing the right voices in the room as we develop that statement. And then my next comment is on C. I just would like to add, in addition to highlight existing educational opportunities, I would like to add the language to also add new opportunities as deemed appropriate because I think that the way it's currently stated is overconfident, and I think that we have, as a district, always to go to listening to the voices of our BIPOC students and staff and to really make sure that we've got the right opportunities available. So I think that's really important, that we're, we're listening to and amplifying the voices of our BIPOC students. And then I would actually like to see us add a G, where we add our staff demographics to our staff utilization report. I strongly support hiring more BIPOC staff, more representative of our student population, and I think, you know, an important first step is to make sure that we've got increased transparency in that area.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I, I too support this, this goal, and I, and I agree with Sherry's changes. Those make a lot of sense.
I also support this goal and wondered if in letter E, in addition to what it says, if we could think about adding in the part where it says into expand, expanding culturally responsive literature? If we could say to expand and implement or, or to expand the implementation of cultural, culturally responsive literature and also add across the curriculum? I just want to make sure it's clear, you know, and I understand from letter F, we're going to start with social studies, but I think it, it's important that in, in all subjects that we're making sure that we have literature that is, you know, certainly more culturally responsive.
So I, I too am supportive of this goal. I have a little bit of a concern about the, the G that Sherry suggested. In all the reading I've done, and maybe Darlene can comment on this, you know, all minority teaching is a shortage area. You can't even get a minority represent, minorities appropriately represented in inner-city schools to represent their student population because there is a, a shortage across the country in minority teachers. And, and if that's changed in the last year, since I've done a lot of reading about this, then maybe Darlene can, can talk about that, but I, what I would not like to do is to make us stand out as being, you know, not working in that area when there is a true shortage in this area. And it is a, it is a college problem. They need to, they need to address the education of minority students to become teachers. I mean, it is a massive national problem. And I think you are possibly making the district, you're, you're putting the district in a tough position when it's a national problem, and I don't think that we need to be doing that because I think we've done it, you know, we, we continually move in the direction of being more sensitive, but, you know, this is not just a New Canaan issue and, and people that aren't aware of what's happening nationally could misinterpret that information.
Yeah, I think, I definitely hear that point, Deanna. I think there are ways to, you know, to address that, whether it's, you know, when we discuss our, our report, we can talk about, you know, what things look like nationally, what our goals may be, you know, what the concerns are that we might have, like we do, you know, just different issues, but we, you know, we know that there's a shortage with particular, you know, types of teachers, particular, particular disciplines. So I, you know, I just, I think it's a conversation that we need to have, you know, and if there are, there are issues that we need to address, we need to address them, and if there are reasons why, you know, we can't get to a particular goal because we can't find, you know, the people that we'd like to hire, or, you know, those people aren't available, then, you know, it is what it is, but I, I do think we need to have the conversation.
This is Carl, if I could comment. So first of all, I had a lot of comments on this last time around, and I really appreciate some of the, the changes that were made, so thank you for being responsive, Brian. I have a couple of things. First, actually, since we're all talking about it, I...
Carl, you just muted. You, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. I was just trying to flip so I could see Brian. You know, I do think we should include a statement about, about arriving at a goal with regard to, to hiring BIPOC individuals. To me, that's the most tangible staff, that, and effective staff that could be taken, you know, in, in short order. I'm not aware of the, the research that Deanna cited, so if there are, you know, issues in that regard. But I do think a statement of, you know, recognizing that that would be a direction we want to head would be important to incorporate that, that language into, into the goal. And with regards to disclosure, in terms of, you know, what the percentage is, I would be in favor of that. Let's represent the facts as they are, and we can explain what the facts, the, the reason for that. A couple other things would be, and this is actually sort of responsive to what Ms. Nussbaum said, her comments, is rather than have all of these things appear in the goals in one block as if it is something that is separate and apart, I would, and I, I think I sent this over to you in a markup, I did, Brian, I would actually, except for the first one, which is about, you know, thoughtfully arriving at a goal, they all relate to actually other sections of the document. They relate to, they relate to curriculum, they relate to staff training. So why don't we put those items, engroup them with where they fit, to show that this is something that is, we want to integrate into the fabric of how we run the school, just as, as we do every other topic, rather than it being something of a, an aside. Either we're trying to showcase it to make ourselves feel good, or it's, we're, we're treating it as other, and I don't think that that's what we're trying to do here. So I, I would actually integrate that language logically where it fits throughout the document with regard to whether it's, it's teacher development, curriculum, education, or health and wellness and, and cultural issues. And, and then I think also what that would do is that it would actually showcase that first bullet point A, which is a, a particular goal for this year, which is to try to arrive at something that is really meaningful and great. And that is about having, you know, that, that, that stems from having a, a good dialogue. I, you know, said last time that I was worried about moving, you know, too quickly, and I hear people saying, you know, we don't want to waste this moment, but I, I think that the, the way to approach it is to use the moment to start an intelligent and thoughtful and caring dialogue to come up with a, a great solution. And I think we should showcase that as the, as the real initiative, you know, the core initiative that is, that is a standout this year. Those are some of my thoughts. And I really liked, I really liked Sherry's idea about having an expert as well involved in that. There are experts out there, some more expert than others. It's also a difficult area because there's some snake oil being sold in this area, and so we need to, to have the right kind of, of input, and it's not about, you know, having someone come in and train everybody, it's about how to facilitate conversations so people increase their understanding of, of biases.
Penny, did you have something to add?
Right. No, I, I just wanted to say I'm supportive of this goal also, and the one thing I thought I think is, it's a little bit, it's not just a one-year goal. It's going to take us, I think it's a little bit like layers of onion, and it's going to take us a while to sort of understand it as a board and to get to where we want and need to be. And also, like we've done with other, like, this is not a mandate that's coming down, it's a goal of the board, but we, when we've had mandates that have come down and things that need to be done, we've gone through them very thoughtfully, and we've come up with a solution that was really good for New Canaan. And a lot of times, that solution became a model for the rest of the state. And what I didn't see in this one goal was sort of the process going forward for setting our goal-making. So I think we, you know, you could add it maybe to 2A, we can have a statement, but I think other, I think some other schools where I've looked at their documents, they've set, as, at the end of the statement, they've set goals for future years. Because this is going to be a really complicated year, and we don't, I think as Carl actually said the last time we were talking about it, we don't want to undersell the importance of this. We want to start it in a really thoughtful way that the community embrace and we embrace and we all learn. So I think we need to add something in here on A as to setting goals for future years, and everything we're do, you know, all that we're doing to sort of evaluate what we're doing is good because you need to sort of say, where are we? But then to say, where should we be going? And that's the part I'd like to see added to this.
Is it, so is it a, like, is it, I don't want to say strategic plan, but is it a statement plus a long, long-range plan?
I think you could just say, we could, at some point, just say and set near and longer-term goals to improve and evaluate diversity, education, and equity. Because we don't know what they are, so we don't want to get...
Right.
Too specific, but just so that there's a thought, who's ever working on it, to say, all right, this is what we're doing now, and what would be the next steps that we would want, where we would want to take it.
Yeah. I, I actually agree with everything that you just said, Penny, and I, I think that's a, a good way to think about it because I, I think this year, especially in light of, you know, our other focus, that this keeps it front and center, but it's also, we have a lot to learn and to think about and to, you know, there's a lot of evaluate, you know, evaluating and assessing what we have in place, and I think from that will come, become more clear what we need to do and how we want to do that going forward for New Canaan. So, you know, even to thinking about like staff utilization and things like that, that's a very specific action, but I think that should be one thing that's considered as a result of this process, looking at our hiring practices or, you know, HR, you know, and how we want to move forward with that, whether it's reporting or partnering with a community organization or whatever it may be. I think there are some good options out there that we could consider, so that would be my, my thought.
If we're going to bring in somebody who is an expert in the field, let's make the most of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Julie?
I do actually, I like Carl, what you suggested, and, and maybe, you know, if we're sort of combining Penny, what you were talking about, and Carl, maybe that's our, our goal then ultimately is to embed these points in, in the other aspects of our, of our goal-setting. Actually, when I had looked at this earlier, the, the one that did sort of stick out as being maybe not like the others was, was F, just in terms of the social studies curriculum. I'm just wondering if that could be moved at least this year, you know, in with goal one, which is all about curriculum and, you know, maybe its own number in there, but I just, I feel like somehow that needs to be incorporated a little bit more smoothly, I guess, into what our current year goals are. But, but I agree, Carl, with what you said. I think these are, you know, it shouldn't, ultimately, our goal is to not have this be a special thing. This is, our goal is to have this be part of who we are and part of what we stand for, and so... And so just embedded within, just a part of the rest of our goals.
Pat?
Thanks. I'd like, definitely overall, pretty supportive of these goals. Just a comment on goals in general, there's a lot of them in here. You know, I was thinking this year would almost be good to shorten some of these other goals because there's a lot of stuff. I hope you get it all done. But, you know, there's a ton of stuff in here. When you look at it, it's like, I, you know, you know, we talk about time, but that's a lot of time. But, you know, I'd love to see something in here on how there's, you know, transparency in the community. I don't see how the, you know, the community gets involved in this and where their input is. There's no feedback loop in here that I can see that gets feedback from the community on this, you know. It's, this just one goal is very big. It almost could be a subcommittee itself because there's a lot of different pieces and parts. But I would love to see some way that, you know, the community is involved as well, that it's not just sort of pushed out with no input. I don't see anywhere in here where we can, where we're getting any feedback at all.
I think A potentially, I mean, maybe I'm.
Well, A is like, sort of, it sounds like, it's almost like developing like a mission statement. But that, I'm talking about like, how does, you know, how does the community have input on to how some of this is, how it's being delivered, how it's being created, you know? Where, how do they get their voice heard as well? We've heard some voices, but there's a lot of other people. So something in here to sort of represent that would be good as well.
Yeah. Well, and I would hope that in our process, you know, we'll be discussing a lot of these in our meetings as we go forward. So it would be an opportunity to hear from our, whether it's students or, you know, the BIPOC group that we heard from tonight or other constituents as well. I think, you know, we would always invite them to hear their comments. That's one way.
Yeah, but more than comments.
You know, one thing is like, there's the bullet point about parents, you know, education, educate parents or train them. I propose, you know, using the word forum as opposed to teach. I mean, I think we're all trying to learn, so I'm not sure if anyone's in a position to be teaching anybody yet. Whereas if we could have a forum to try to understand perspectives, that would be useful. And it could be a great year to have, bring in a lot of speakers with a lot of different perspectives on this. But, you know, for people that care and want to think thoughtfully about this issue, to take that in, to, you know, think about a way forward that is, makes sense and is effective for our community.
Carl, I think you're referring to two D, where it says to continue partnering with New Canaan Cares and other community agencies to develop and/or offer parent education. I do think that, you know, the partnership that we have with those community agencies is one way that we sort of, we communicate back and forth and we sort of know what's, you know, we have the feedback from New Canaan Cares and that partnership and, you know, other groups that we are regularly communicating with and kind of working with. So, yeah, the idea there was not that we're going to teach everybody what they need to know. But it was a part, it's a partnership in that we've done things together, like bringing in, having some speakers come that spoke with our staff, spoke with the community via webinar recently, Mora is one of them, you know, some others. So that partnership is almost like to seek out those experts and to bring them in. It's not for us to, you know, sort of necessarily be the ones providing that, those educational opportunities for folks.
Why do we use the word like to develop and/or offer parent education and forums? Or just forums instead of education? The idea is to create a sense of openness and dialogue.
It's a good suggestion. Sherri?
So I just want to add on to what some others are saying, that I do think it's essential right now that we seek opportunities to listen to and then amplify the voices of color, the voices of our BIPOC students and parents. I think that's really, it's essential. And I also want to respond to the suggestion that we kind of integrate, take, peel these sub-bullets apart and integrate them elsewhere. I think where we are right now, I would encourage us to keep this all together here so that we can have a laser focus in on this DEI goal as a priority, priority goal. I think, you know, that is the long-term goal, but I think right now we need to keep it front and center and together, and we need to measure it. And that is, again, why, just going back to the staff utilization, I think that we need some data and we need some measurement to hold ourselves accountable to this goal. And so I do really want to encourage us to add that G item to this overall goal. And just the last point is, as a district, I think we really need to be mindful right now of our BIPOC students, the stress that they're under in terms of the, they're at the intersection of stress and anxiety of a global pandemic and also in our country right now with the racial strife that is happening and it's still happening. You know, with the tragic events this past weekend, it's, and the stress and anxiety that our students are under, I think that we need to really be making sure that we're addressing this as part of our mental health and social emotional wellness for our students.
Okay. So I think these are all great comments and feedback. Thank you all. I think, do we want to go back, Dr. Luzzi, and review unless there are other comments?
Yeah, I mean, we have the good fortune, since this is a special meeting, that we kind of snuck in the middle. We meet again on September 8th. And so what I would recommend is not taking action on this tonight so that we can take, I took pretty careful notes, and I know Jen did as well. So I will try to make some changes and, you know, based on what we heard here and get them back out to you.
Okay.
That we can continue the conversation on the eighth.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
Great.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Well, thank you. Very thoughtful dialogue.
Okay. And then there was just one other small change to number three.
Oh.
All right.
Right, I'm sorry. Oh, the last goal, Goal Five.
Yeah, the last goal, yep. Somehow I missed a page when I printed it.
That's okay. Yep, Goal Five, we just added in, you know, regular reports to the board on COVID-related needs and expenditures, focusing on anticipated needs and their related fiscal ramifications.
Yes. We're going to be doing it. Might as well put it in there.
Yep, very important. And of course, all the other, the plans, everything that are going on on the facility side in order to make sure that, I mean, we really touched, there's so much to talk. We only scratched the surface even tonight around those conversations and all of what we've been doing in order to prepare. So we'll make sure that we, there's our ongoing dialogues between us, for sure. And that's that? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Proven dialogue. Okay, so now we're back to, so we were not approving the goals tonight. As Dr. Luzzi mentioned, we'll review them as a final read on the eighth or the first, the second.
The eighth.
What are we meeting?
September 8th. Our next meeting is the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Okay.
Yep. And what we typically do so that, well, we need to do comments from the public, I guess, first. I was going to do announcements.
Okay. So comments from the public. If there's anybody wishing to address the board now, please raise your hand. We have a couple people.
Okay. I will start with, let's see, I see Monica? Nope, let's see, who do we have here?
Two are in.
Okay, Lauren, I think you can speak.
Hi, everyone. Just first and foremost, a very heartfelt thank you for this necessary and important conversation. And I'm grateful for each of you for being here, for listening, for being thoughtful, and for continuing the discussion. It is my deep hope that the DEI goals will be moved forward and that we will all be stewards of them. So just a thank you to all of you. I know it's been a long meeting and I appreciate all that you are doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And Monica is in?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Hi, thank you. I would also like to say thank you to everyone on this panel for taking the time to really dive into this. I think this is so important, and I have to say I am so proud of our town and for everyone on this panel that we're even having this discussion. I'm really encouraged by a lot of the things that I'm hearing. I do want to say, as a member of the BIPOC community, I'm hearing lots of things about forums and feedback. And I think that Sherri West had a really good point when I say at this time, what really needs to be amplified and the feedback that really needs to be centered and the voices that really need to be listened to are the ones who are directly affected by what is going on right now. I think that feedback is great, but I think that it's, I mean, you have to try and imagine what, how dehumanizing it feels to be, you know, a member of the BIPOC community and to have your, you know, your experience, your story, and your humanity be sort of voted upon by people who don't look or experience the world the way that you do. So I really hope that everyone takes that into consideration when we're thinking about things like feedback. I really think at this point that the ones that we really should be listening to are the ones, you know, who are directly affected by this sort of programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have Brian again, let's see. Brian?
Hi, everyone again. Thanks again for digging in on this. I echo, you know, the sentiments already stated and gratitude for you all and this work. I just like to add, it's going to be messy, you know? If it does move forward, it's going to be a messy process. And I think that there's been some really great things said from Lauren and from the board about hiring an expert and making sure that all the duck are in the row. I think there's also a really great value in simply kind of plowing forward on this and realizing that we, you know, we can read books, we can read great literature written by BIPOC authors, and we don't need an expert really to do that. We can make that decision now as a team to move forward. We don't need to call our friend who's a BIPOC to tell us about their experience because many of those experiences are already written down in articles. So there's things that we can take right now in the local community to drive it forward and to amplify those voices without having to put the labor on people who are our friends and colleagues or people that we would hire to bring in. And those are decisions that we can all make on an individual level and as a district without having to spend any money or do anything like that. So I think a combination of the two will ultimately move it forward. But I also don't want to get into the mindset that says this is someone else's work that we have to pay to bring in. This is our work to do as citizens of a country with this path, with this history, and with this present state of affairs. So please use me as a resource if I can be of assistance in that, and I look forward to seeing the progress on this. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's still Ethan, maybe?
It's Fatu, or her son. Ethan?
Oh, no, this is me. Thank you all very much, very much for all the work you've been doing so far and the dedication you have put in this DEI implementation. And it's been a very long meeting and I appreciate the time you guys are still taking to focus on it. And indeed, there are so many things we can do now without the specific expert. And Mrs. West, I appreciate that, all your comments, and they were very thoughtful. And I'd be more than happy to help with the resources that I already have and the resources we are already working with right now. And you guys, just let me know who to share them with, and then you can do your check and see if they go along the line of what you want to implement in the school district. But the resources are available, they've been available forever. And I appreciate that we're finally getting there, getting to a point where we're going to include them in our curriculums. So thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that looks like the last one. So we'll move on to announcements and future business.
Yes, just very briefly, our next meeting is September 8th, the Tuesday after Labor Day. We'll have our start of school, first day of school reports from our principals, as we typically do. And we will have our end-of-the-year financial report. Dr. Kitting will share with us the closing of the books for 1920, and we'll get an update at that point, again, financially where we are. And that's usually an excellent meeting and a way to celebrate all of the great work that's going on. And we look forward to that conversation. So now we'll also have a continued second reading of our goals that we'll add to that meeting based on the changes from tonight.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. And so on that, motion to adjourn. Penny? Second, Julie. All in favor? All right. Hybrid meeting, success.